Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well. I'd like to reconvene our budget review. This is a continuation of the meeting from Tuesday night. That would be May 23rd. I'd like a motion to enter back into our budget meeting. The motion is made by Mr. Swanson, seconded by Mr. Olympia, all in favor. So we reviewed a number of items, touched on a number of topics at our last meeting. And I know Mr. Rippon is here that is going to break things down for us. And I feel we can kind of work off of the list of items that were, where there were questions asked on Tuesday night's meeting. I figure we could start from there. We have our full committee meeting, full committee today. Our school business manager, Sam Rippon, and our assistant superintendents, Kelly Chase and Mark Higgins. It's available to answer any and all questions. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Rippon and we can kind of go through that paperwork.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I guess to bring it back to where we are. At Tuesday's meeting, a budget was presented that the appropriation requested is $90,677,549. The committee within that number had some requests and/or questions. I'm going to call it either or. And there were 10 in total that were asked. And at that point, we, Superintendent Vidal and I worked in compiling those. There's a one pager that you all received electronically. It's also at your, at your place, by your seat. And I would take them in order and then open it up for, you know, any, any comments that you may have. The first, they're not necessarily in priority order, just to be clear. So the first, I think they more came in chronologically, but anyhow. The first item was to have full-time paras at the lower grade levels. Pairs are either 18 hours a week, which are part-time, or 30 hours a week, full-time. And the response there is within the current complement of pair professionals. They would, they would be redistributed. And again, that redistribution is listed, what's intended for next year, to weight the full-time paras more heavily at the lower grade levels. This would be a budget-neutral proposal because, again, it's just taking the existing complement and redistributing. The second was to keep all three teachers in the choices program. Currently, there are three, but the budget reduces that to two. This would not be budget-neutral. This with benefits would cost approximately $100,000. Just to note, it is projected that only nine students will be enrolled K to five, you know, in that program. And even with two teachers, there are six pair professionals that, it's literally almost a one-to-one ratio of adult to student, or student to adult. And the commitment by the superintendent is if, if needed, we would add another teacher, restore out of the special education grant, the 240 grant. The third item was looking at adding and creating an assistant director of athletics position. Currently, that's not in the budget. This would be something that we would have to work with the union to determine what that job would look like, what bargaining unit would it be in? And so at this point, it's not recommended to include that in the budget that's before you because of those, of those parameters. Similarly, the director of alumni, it'd be the same. You haven't had the time to put together a job description, don't know, again, would that be a union position, non-unit position? What would that look like? And so, again, that would, ideally, we just don't have sufficient time to really flesh that all out. Next is the addition of school safety and mental health personnel. There's another document that basically highlights the growth in those categories. The categories being, and I apologize, it is in your, in your packet. Guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, school psychologists, behavior. A BCBA is a board-certified behavior analyst and building access attendants. And as the 19th school, 20th school year is a base year. And next year's, the current year budget, as the other year, it's grown by more than 50%, both in dollars and in FTE. And so the message there is a lot of work has been done. And again, the opinion of the superintendent is it's sufficiently staffed as the budget is currently constructed. And so he doesn't recommend, or doesn't see the need of any additional staffing in those areas for the next school year. Maintenance line item, it was proposed to put a $400,000 line item in the budget. Again, I would refer to your packet. I did reach out to the city finance director to get some clarity. You know, because I did talk, at the last meeting, I mentioned to the mayor about that. But figuring how busy the mayor is, and I have a relationship with the finance director, I reached out to him directly, copying the mayor, about the issues that were brought up with respect to, is there sufficient budget to support what's in the budget, to support operation and maintenance of the 10 school buildings we have? And you can see my email, and then you can see his response. Superintendent and I are heartened that the budget is increasing by over $400,000 year-over-year. And that according to Director Jingerith, he feels there's sufficient budget in next year to deal with the priorities of the buildings. But being sensitive to the concern of this committee, we've been able to, and I would have, we would have recommended this anyway. $400,000 in one year is a lot to put in, especially given most of the work is done in the summer when the buildings don't have students. And that wouldn't give us a lot of time to go out and do the bidding and all necessary. So I would have recommended, and Superintendent agrees, to phase it in if it's desired at $100,000. There's $106,676 that was created based on some last-minute turnover savings, new information with Essar to, to address this issue. And again, Superintendent Vidal mentioned there are other things you could do with that $106,676, but that is, right now, it's currently being place-held in facilities. Extracurricular for Higgins Golf, that is added to the budget. Eight gardening clubs at the elementary schools. As Superintendent mentioned at the last meeting, there were additional stipends added at all the elementary schools. And so, you know, working with the principals, you know, incorporate, as you can see, you know, trying to incorporate that into the curriculum, presumably into a math curriculum. But that's something that would be worked on over the coming year. The JROTC program, the budget, there's a $1,700 line item in the budget for that stipend. I guess if it's the, if it's the purview of the committee or the desire of the committee, we could discuss whether that's an appropriate stipend, but there is a stipend. And lastly, there was a desire to bring back, if not all the maintenance department, at least the school-specific part of the maintenance. Again, in Director Jingerith's email response, he was not in support of that. And it would be if the whole budget for next year is, again, $4,439,891. That is both municipal and school side. And again, just highlighting that that budget is growing by over 10% year-over-year. That completes the list of items. And I'm probably best off stopping and opening it up through the mayor for any comments or, or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rippon. Well done. Before I open it up to some comments and questions that I think all of us will have, I did want to make a few comments on some of these items myself. I am very much interested in, not for this budget, but for the next budget and future budgets. The position that was presented by Mr. Amico for director of alumni. I've been in touch myself personally, and I'm sure everybody has to some degree. People that are interested in maybe supporting our students are helping in some way through scholarships. And we've been very fortunate over the years to have a number of well-meaning and caring people who give scholarships to our students, organizations, in our city businesses. And I think that's the tip of the iceberg. I actually think there would be a lot more opportunities for people that would want to contribute. We've seen some amazing and wonderful donations. But to maybe have somebody, as Mr. Amico stated previously, to kind of head that up, do some more community outreach, reach out to our alumni. I think there'd be real value there and would more than pay for what the salary would potentially be. So I know it's probably, it's not going to be in this budget, but I do think that's one we have to really look at in the future. Because I think that is, as Joe mentioned, a number of other communities and schools have such a position. And I think it could be real value there in the future. So that's one I would really like to dig in maybe this coming year. As assistant director athletics, that's going to be a hard one, I think, in my opinion, to fully fund that position. But I'm thinking of maybe having an assistant where we provide an additional stipend to, you know, one of our physical education teachers, something that can maybe take on some additional responsibilities in the future. I think that could be of great value. I know there's some steps we'd have to take for both of those potential positions, working with our union and others. But I think there could be some value in that. I'd have a hard time supporting a full-time position for that, for that role. But maybe an additional stipend to maybe take on some specific responsibilities for that department, I think would be very helpful. I was very pleased when I was reviewing the documents before the meeting, the item that Mr. Rippon mentioned for number five. You know, I think that has been a point of focus for us as a school committee that we've advocated for over the years in terms of trying to help our students' mental health needs, our school safety. And I knew that we had increased the numbers. But to be able to see it kind of spelled out in this way, the investments that we've made, and I know all of us have advocated for this. But just to go in terms of a four-year difference from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2024, we've increased our guidance counselors from 17 to 21. We've increased our adjustment counselors from 11.5 to 20. Our school psychologists from 6 to 9. Our behavioral consultants, the BCBAs, from 1.6 to 4.5. And our building access attendants, our safety officers, from 3.5 to 9.8. So a total in those five positions, which has been something, again, that all of us have really pushed for, knowing, trying to understand the needs of our students, seeing what's going on in the world, certainly with COVID and a whole number of other factors that have put such stress and pressure and additional concerns and worries on students and families and staff. I think to see that we've gone from 39.6 in four years to 64.3. That's a 25, 25-person increase, nearly $2 million of a total increase we've made in those areas. I was very proud to see that. And hopefully, we can continue that investment in the future. Because I think just more and more, that's going to be such a need for our community and our students. So that was wonderful to see, because I know that's something that's been important for all of us. And then the last item, and Mr. Hockman has really raised some good points during meetings and also in conversations that he and I have had. I very much am open to a real in-depth discussion about the future of the facilities. A few years back, when I presented this, I really felt that we could meet the needs of the city through a more city-based effort, school buildings, city buildings, and really have a, you know, kind of a more citywide approach. In some ways, it has worked well for us, but in a lot of ways, we haven't met the needs of our schools and some of our other city buildings. Now, some of that is because we've had difficulty filling spots and getting the right people in, in some of the trades and some custodial work. But a lot of that is, it's, the system that I had hoped for hasn't quite worked. So I would very much like to, you know, through the committee with Mr. Hockman, really dig into potentially bringing maintenance back to the schools. I don't want to definitively say, yes, that's the right move. It could be just some small tweaks that we could make, or it could be some major tweaks. That's something- That's something I think as a committee, as administration, as a union representation, that we should really dig into, because I do think we could do a better job, and we need to do a better job. I had a meeting a couple of days ago with a company that provides a lot of assistance for, Jim Hafer and I met with, a company that provides some help with some maintenance and communication, and I think to maybe make the system more efficient. So I think maybe meeting with a couple of these companies that offer these type of services could really, could be of great value to us. So I think it's going to be hard to add $400,000 right now to this line item, but I do think that there's a better way that this could be done. And I think that's something we need to tackle here in the next few months to maybe set something up for later in the school year and maybe have something ready for next fiscal year. And if it's a, if it's a significant change, like bringing maintenance back here or custodial back, then I think I'm very much open to that conversation. So I did want to speak to that as well. Again, I think it's worked in some ways, but in a lot of ways, it hasn't. And that's been something that's bothered me for a while now, and I know a number of you have fielded questions from teachers and administration and principals, and I know there's better ways we can do this, but it has been a struggle and just hasn't worked out the way I had hoped. And I think either minor tweaks or major tweaks, or just kind of reverting to the old system, would be, I'd be open to all of those potential options. So again, I think it's hard to add a significant amount of money to that line item at this point, but I really do want to try to dig in during these next few months, these, set up some meetings and really try to come up with something that works. And I know Jim Hafer feels the same way. We have a posting that, we're actually doing interviews as we speak for an admin position for the, for the facilities department. We've been, we've been interviewing some additional custodians, I believe we're still three short. But we're almost, we're at a much better spot in terms of personnel than we were a couple of years ago during, during those real dark COVID days. So I did want to speak to a few of those items in terms of the paras and some of those stipends. It's great to see kind of some of the work that was presented here. Paraprofessionals play an important role, certainly as we all know. And so I think we've made a lot of progress. And I bet if the numbers, if we looked at the numbers from five years ago, 10 years ago to now, I think the investments in paraprofessionals would be pretty evident as well. But there's always needs for further review and discussion and to really try to, again, meet the needs of our students and our, and our teachers and staff and everybody. We need to continue to emphasize and focus on our teachers, our paras, and certainly maintenance is going to be something that's extremely important. So those are just some comments I wanted to make in general after Mr. Rippon presented the work that was done since Tuesday night. And now I figure we can open it up, get some comments, questions, and ready to do that now. Anybody like to start off? Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Rippon. Thank you for this information. I appreciate it. I'd like to go straight to the portion of additional school safety personnel. I'm not sure who I'm directing this to, but I do appreciate the increases. But I wanted to go to the Higgins line item for the building access attendance and then the backup that goes with it. So I see that we have two FTEs, and then when I go to the backup of it, it just looks a little confusing, so I'm not sure if there's anybody here that can explain those building access attendants.
I do see the budget has two FTEs at $90,253, and I'm going to go to the, it'd be tab 9 in the big book.
Yep. So I want to get clarification on the backup where the positions are that are listed, what their roles are, because there's a few, there's a few listed there, even though it says two.
There are, there are two positions, one at roughly $43,000, one at roughly $47,000. That totals 90.
So can you tell me the one that was, it's listed as 182 days, and then that's not, it says eliminated? And then there was a bilingual, it says, that's in the red, so I'm just kind of figuring this out.
Yeah. And again, I apologize, it would have, you know, been new.
You know?
Yeah. It appears there, there are two different positions. One is, it looks like a position is being upgraded, so going from, and also, yeah, I think in both, you know, what, one position, it looks like is being upgraded from a attendant to, you know, an interpreter, and so the salary is higher than the old position, and the, and that replaced the person on the second line. That's, that's what I see.
So I guess I'm looking for clarification, if anybody can answer. Are these building access attendants, receptionists, and interpreters only, or do they walk the halls? Do they provide any type of security? That's what I'm looking for. I think Mr. Higgins might have an answer.
Yeah, through the chair. First point of clarification, I know the first and fourth position in the budget, those are the two positions that are currently employed, it's just, it is a little confusing.
Okay.
And I do, yes, the middle school's model is different than the high school in that, you are absolutely correct, that, at the middle school, definitely more interpreter, welcoming service, the front desk, things like that, whereas the high school, more, excuse me, much more of a security angle. So the middle school, two positions, more interpreting services, greeting.
Welcoming.
Welcoming, things of that nature. High school, definitely more straight security.
Great. So with that clarification, I think that my interest here would be add two building access attend, not access, building attendants, more that are in line like we have at the high school, because these positions seem more like, you know, as Dr. Higgins said, welcoming, front desk. So for a little bit more security in that aspect, just like our high school, I would like to move that we add two building attendants to this budget.
What do you want to call them? What are they called at the high school?
Can we look at the, the high school and see what the salaries? So you're envisioning, Ms. Carpenter, a, yeah, more of a security, walking the halls, like Dr. Higgins mentioned, at the school, at the high school?
Yeah, similar to what the high school does.
Can we look at the high school then to see what?
So that's tab 10. Building access attendant, they have four, $109,000. And then if you go to their backup, it...
They have 7.8 at 230.
Oh, they, they increased by four, excuse me. Yeah, they have 7.8.
Yeah, the range is, the range is anywhere from a low of 21,177, depending on where they sit on the, you know. So this would cost, you know, I would say roughly, well, four of them are, as much as almost $60,000. 29,426 times two, that would be the most it would cost if we added those, 58,852.
Do you say like around 20, 20-something thousand, is that a part-time?
It's eight hours a day, 182 days a year. Full-time school a year.
Full-time school a year.
Well, those, yeah, I mean, they're listed here as 20.21 hours. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, they make $18 to $21 now.
Right. Forty, two, 426. Yeah, five of the eight are budgeted at that amount.
1.0 is FTE. Yeah, that's what I'm, okay, so we do have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven full-time employees at 1.0, and then one is at 0.8.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, so there's a 0.8?
Correct.
So your idea is to maybe have two of those type positions at the middle school?
Two-fold, yeah. That's my idea. If anybody would like to add on to that idea, they're welcome to.
Okay, let's put that one on hold then. That's a good item. So it's approximately $60,000? Unless you want to call, I mean, I don't want to, what I was thinking was, we would kind of zoom in on a few positions or ideas and then kind of go from there. So that's what I was thinking, Mrs. Carpenter, to put that one aside for now.
So start a list, and then I'll make a motion later.
That's what I was thinking. Unless, that's just my idea, but I was thinking that we could do it that way, kind of talk through some ideas that we all may have, create a list, and then maybe work off that. We good?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, but...
On the, on the item, before we go to a motion, if you wanted to make that, or I'll leave that to you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mrs. Dunn, on this item?
Yeah, I'll be on it. The reason I think a list is good is because if we, if we start putting things in, taking things out, putting things, then we're going to go back and we're going to have to take something else out. I think if we have a list of what we want to, to zone in on with the estimated cost, because we are going to have to go in and take some things out in order to balance, balance the budget. So let's keep a running list and then...
We can, we can go around, around the horn here, around the bend, and then come back, and then we'll, but I will, I will make the motion before we leave.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think it's easier to...
Yep, we can go around and see what else everybody wants, and then add it up and see how we're going to pay for it. How's that?
And with our technology, if someone at the front table could type that list, we would be able to show it on the screen as we went through. But I don't, I don't know how to do that. Give me an hour, I'll figure it out, but...
Okay, so, Mrs. Dunn, you all set?
No, I'll sit here and complain some more, but yeah, I'm done.
No, no, for now, on this item.
You just ignored what I said about technology.
I don't know how to do what he...
I know.
Much smarter people than me can do that. I don't, I don't know. But I, I'm going to create a list. I'm going to create a list, building attendants at the middle school, $60,000. We'll put that aside. Okay. And then let's, I'm going to go to the next, I'm going to open it up on this topic, Mr. Olympio, or some, on this topic, Mr. Olympio.
So we're going to develop a list of our wants and then decide how, what we're going to cut at that point, is that...
I was thinking we create a list of our hopes and wants, see where that number falls.
Okay.
And then get into a real discussion.
How we're going to pay for it.
How we're going to do that. That was my, that was the way I was thinking to do this, but, all right, so, is that, okay? Mrs. Carpenter, anything else you wanted to add at this point? Circle back to you? All right. Yes, Mr. Hockman.
If we can, while we're adding or putting items on our list, can we go through the 10 items that we, the items that we asked for on the 10, and see where you are on that? So, Ms. Carpenter, I think you brought up the paras and items one and two. Can you address where you stand on those, just so we know if they're still on your list or where they go?
As long as the paras come to fruition, and they're, and it says that they're budget-neutral, then that's fine. We'll follow up with this later on in the year. And then the choices program is written here, as long as the teacher is pulled back in if the students come into the program. That's what the superintendent has written down, correct?
Correct, correct.
I think a couple of other committee members were talking on this point, so...
Mr. Hockman, you okay?
If we're going around the horn, let's just try to incorporate the 10 items as well.
I agree. Yep. Okay, so we're going to go to Mr. Amico.
Sure, through the chair. On the items, on the, I agree with you on the attendants, by the way. On the items on the West School, I really, I get it, our numbers are a little bit lower. That group, though, that choices group is really a group that I do think we should keep the three teachers there and keep the, that's my recommendation, to keep the one to two, three to four, and five groups, the three different teachers there. I just think if we have the number, if we get the numbers there, then we have to pull someone in. I think it's just easier to start day one, knowing that you have those three teachers in there. If anything happens, you know, you're fully staffed, and provide them with the paras that they need as well. I just think it's, why delete it and then have to go back to it? I just think it's, just, just keep it as is. We're not really in a position to be cutting anything, or, so I, I just think we should keep it as is. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Dunn?
I, I agree with Mr. Amico. That's a population, behavioral population. And we know that that population can ebb and flow, but it usually grows. And if we take a teacher away from that program, and then we have to expand, we're going to have to go out and find a special education teacher. Now, trying to find a special education teacher that can deal with that population, you want experienced people. And we will be losing an experienced special education teacher from that program, who's going to go to whatever position the teacher is being assigned to. Trying to pull them back in, I don't know if that would happen, because I don't know where that teacher's going to go within the district. I honestly, I really do think we should keep that, because there are classes out of district in specific facilities that are made up completely of puberty students. I'd like to see us work on bringing those groups back here. If we can do that, we're going to be able to save a lot of money. That was how we originally started these programs. It was to be able to service our students, their identifiable population, and it ebbs and flows. It is directly related to social and emotional growth. Those teachers, we've invested money in those teachers so that they can handle those children and get them back into the mainstream, and they've had some good success. I think we should leave that program alone, just keep it the way it is, and then find savings somewhere else. Next year, if everyone is fine, then reevaluate that program. But just based on the history of it coming and going, we could have a big problem come September or October. Maybe, maybe when October comes is when it shows up. That I don't know. But I would rather leave it alone for now. I really would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Just on that point, on this choices program, it's my understanding that we usually defer to department heads when it comes to some of these, some of these situations, and it's the department head who's recommending that we go down to two teachers. She feels as if with the population that's there, that we would be adequately staffed, not only with the two teachers, but it's, I think essentially, a one-to-one para to student at this point. There are support staff in place that are full-time, that are, have been around a while. And it's my understanding that this was, this was the program that was brought to our attention last year by Ms. Vecchio, that was, had, had some practices that might not have been, that might have caused a bunch of those students who are out of district to be out of district. And I'm happy to, you know, we've remedied that problem, that situation, but I don't know that those kids are coming back after some of the experiences that they had in this, within our choices program. I, I'm really indifferent about this, because I understand what both Mr. Amico and Ms. Griffin Dunn are saying, in the sense that we don't want to pass on a qualified special education teacher and then be in a position that we might need to add somebody, but at the same time, I don't want to step on the toes of a department head who's saying, I think that under the circumstances, with the, with the population that exists or is anticipated to exist for the 23, 24 school year, this is an area that she's comfortable with the budget as it presently reads. So I just wanted to throw out there that, you know, the department head's position... know, the, the department head's position on this. I, I, actually, I shouldn't say her position, I don't want to speak for her, but in conversations, this wasn't, um, she wasn't concerned about this budget line as it's written.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Any other comments, questions? First on this item. Okay, so we'll put that one aside as well, okay? Let's open it up to other items, whether it be this list or other items. Let's open it up. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, um, thank you. So on the two items that you brought up, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the alumni and the Assistant Athletic Director, I agree, those are two positions that, um, if done correctly, if we, we have some time, that we can definitely move forward next year and start looking at those, especially alumni position. I just think it would be a valuable piece that could, you know, and I was, I was thinking, you know, you could include a liaison in that job description to both, you know, PBD Ed Foundation, PBD Chamber Commerce, our, our wonderful nonprofits that we have. That all ties into what the city does. So, I, I definitely think down the road, we can look at that. The Assistant Athletic Director position, I agree with you through the chair, Mayor, that could be a stipend position. The challenges are great at the athletic department. Not only do our athletic directors, the director, he does such a wonderful job, but there is a recruiting piece to that, you know? And I do think sometimes we, we miss out on students going to other schools, and, and that's something that, you know, we had that Y-PBD program for, for many years, and I'd like to see something like that come back, because a lot of misinformation gets, gets lost in translation. I think a lot of our kids here at the Higgins would benefit from being at the high school versus paying somewhere else. So I, and, and again, that's a position or a stipend that would pay for itself, as far as I'm concerned. So, thank you, I'll yield on those.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. Um, on the subject of the, the Assistant Director of Athletics, I'd like to make sure we leave today with that stipend amount and that is in place, not, you know, I would like that very much. I agree with timing. Write a full description if we want to make it a full-time position. But as we leave today, I'd like that to be identified, so that whoever could step up and help has that ability, and we're compensating them for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to item three and four, the Assistant Director of Athletics, I, I agree as well. This is just not the right time for that one. I'd also like to find out, as far as I can recall, when we, we did change the duties of the athletic director to take a lot of the load off of that position, when we kind of reorganized it. And I'd like to see where the problem lies. We, we took away, you know, teaching assignments, additional evaluation processes, all kinds of things, so that the athletic director could concentrate on the athletic department. So, before I would feel comfortable even adding another position, I'd like to just examine where we stand currently under the current process.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I'll go to Mr. Miko, and then I'll go back to you if you...
Yeah.
Sure, through the mayor and Mrs. Dunn.
On that topic?
Yeah, we, we actually do have a stipend position for that. The person is retiring, and, and I'm thinking that maybe we restructure that, that stipend position, have the superintendent and, um, Ms. Randall and Dr. Vidalah kind of sit together and, um, excuse me, the superintendent, Dr. Randall, Ms. Randall, and Coach D, the assistant, the athletic director, sit together and work on that stipend. But there is a stipend in place there, but the person is, is retiring.
Yep.
I didn't know that. Are they in this budget? Is that position in the budget?
Yeah, it's in there, yep.
Oh. Alright, alright. I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I, um... So, tab 16?
We have the AD, we have clerical, we have health teachers, we have fiscal education teachers. If it were, coaches are stipended, and, and I'd have to go into the detail, which isn't here, to see, of the 298,766, um, that's, and that, in my experience, that's where that stipend would lie.
I'm sorry, give me a moment, I'd like to... Alright, I think I, we'll have to get some clarification on that, I don't want to hold up the meeting. Okay. Alright, excellent. Actually, I'll go back to you, Mrs. Dunn.
Yeah, it's just a piece of information regarding the Director of Alumni. I've been talking to Mr. Olympio about the Alumni Association that we had talked about last year for, for our, for our students, and we've got a little ways to go, but I think that may help take care of some of the questions on that. I wouldn't recommend hiring a Director of Alumni right now. It, you know, if we could charge tuition like St. John's Prep, I would say go for it. But right now, there are people who want to donate, and we just need a method and a way for them to do it, so. Now tax season is over, we'll get back to it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympio?
Thank you. Uh, tab 17, Special Education. There was a line item that jumped out at me. Uh, let's see. It's on, uh, let's see, it's on page two of five of the original detail, and it's line, line item, uh, it's in 17, I think, 091. I'm having a hard time. But there's a position that says, uh, "To Be Determined, Open Position," and it's a IEP Chairperson. Uh, the salary was 107,519. I'm curious to see if this position is still open. It says, "Open Position To Be Determined." What is that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Olympio, can you try, what was it?
Yeah, it's, um, if you go in tab, go in tab 17, and I would say, two of five, if you go on, uh...
Yeah, bottom one.
Yeah.
But it, it says PT.
Yeah, what is that?
PT is physical therapist. So I will tell you, if in fact this person's primary role is a physical therapist, uh, that person's going to save the district more than the 107,000. Physical therapists get over...
Right, but it says "To Be Determined." I just, just the, the label and just, "To Be Determined, Open Position." What is that?
It means that we're currently trying to fill it. It's vacant, it's carrying forward.
Okay, so, so it, has it been filled or no?
As of, I would, I can look at the most recent printout we have, but as of this budget iteration, it was not, because this is pretty current. Give me one second, I'll look at the latest one.
Um, through the chair, excuse me. My understanding, this position was open all year.
Yes.
And they were not able to fill it, but wanted to keep it rolled into the budget for the upcoming school year.
Correct.
So basically operated short one team chair.
Okay.
This past year. So, so the goal is to fill that with a person, so then be up to, essentially, full, full staff for the upcoming school year.
And how, right, and thank you, Dr. Higgins. So, if it was open all year, I mean, how, we, we seem like we survived the year, so why, we could use that money elsewhere?
My sense is, and I...
So we're just going to leave a position open all year, 107,000 dollars in hopes?
I'd have to look and see when that position vacated, but again, I would tell you, given that it's open, that it says "Physical Therapist."
I understand.
We've, you know, we probably paid more than that in contracted services to fill that need, because it's open.
I'll, I'll get you a clear answer for Tuesday. My, I believe that position has been filled.
Okay.
For the next school year. So I believe it was filled with the anticipated start date of July 1st.
Okay.
But I will, I will clearly define that for you, but...
Alright, thank you, Dr. Higgins.
Thank you.
By the way, thank, thank goodness for Google. I have some information about, I was able to open the teacher's contract, uh, and this is what I'm using. Faculty manager is usually a term for Assistant AD. Uh, there is a stipend for each of the seasons, it's the same, it's 4,862 dollars. So that's roughly 14,500 dollars for that position, that's part of that budget.
Okay, on that topic, Ms. Miko, did you have a...
Sure, um, through the chair, and thank you, Dr. Higgins, for bringing that up. If that position is filled in anticipation for July 1st, then I'm okay with it. But if it isn't filled, um, if it can come back to us on Tuesday, because I think I would make a motion to cut that and move those 107,000 elsewhere. But if it is filled, and we, you know, we survived last year, we're able to fill it this year, I'm fine with keeping it.
Yeah, I mean, just the, through the chair, just the thing that got my attention was the "To Be Determined." I mean, that's, what does that mean?
Means we don't have a name for the person.
No, "To Be Determined" means, uh, it could mean a, a bunch of things.
No, I understand. That's your interpretation, I understand.
Yeah, yes. And it's our job to make sure we have everything that's crystal clear.
Right, and I, and I see a number of those as well. That's, uh, that's a, that's a good point, because I see someone under speech, which I know play an important role. But I'm, yeah, I'm wondering what, what salaries were open for the full year, you know, that weren't utilized. So I guess those are, those are questions we'd have to get answers to. Mr. Huckman, on that topic?
Yeah, on that topic, um, I think, first of all, Mr., through the chair to Mr. Olympio, thank you for identifying at least this one line, but it leads to a lot of questions. One is, did we go, um, did we pay contracted services more than 107,000 dollars because we didn't have a, a physical therapist in the district in '22, '23? I'm going to ask these rhetorically now, because I don't know that anyone's prepared to answer them. If you're prepared to answer them, then great. But maybe the more important question is, why don't we have 107,000 dollar surplus? If we didn't pay an employee for the 107,000 dollars salary, plus presumably 30,000 dollars in benefits, why aren't we looking at 147,000 dollars that we get to allocate somewhere else, or is already funding this position for this school, for, for the budget that's before us? And again, I don't know that anyone's prepared to answer that, but, um, there were quite a few of these positions, as I think the mayor identified, within the budget, and I'm not, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but that's just my, the questions that surfaced as I'm hearing, listening to, um, the dialogue on this subject.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huckman. Any other thoughts on this item? Mrs. Dunn?
Sorry, um, it's on that page. Every IEP Chairperson is listed under Unit B. Then we have one that has no Unit B listed next to them, but Unit B is noted in the column. And then the one after that, the person is in Unit B, but not listed in the column. Is there any significance to that, or is it just a typo? This would be page two of five on the Special Ed Budget. It's just one line above that, uh, the line.
I would say that's just a, a, a myth, and they're all Unit B.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Alright, so we will also put that on hold pending further information. And let's continue the discussion. Mr. Huckman?
My turn, am I batting six today?
I don't know, you might be, you might be number five.
Five, I'm batting fifth, alright. Uh, so, first, um, on the 10 items that we talked about on Tuesday, the item seven seems to be added to the budget, so thank you for that. Um, item eight, um, isn't really addressed the way I was, I, I discussed it, but I understand that there's a pilot program over at the South School that, um, is going to start up a garden, I don't know if it's a club or, or what it is, it's my understanding that Ms. Sullivan, Principal Sullivan, has a graduate, um, recent college graduate who went to the South School, maybe while Dr. Higgins was there. I don't know, who's going to start up some horticultural activities at that school, and we'll use it as a pilot. But what I would like to do, and I don't know if, I don't know if we're allowed to do this, but, uh, I'd like to refer this to, um, Mr. Miko's Subcommittee. I'm okay taking it off the budget consideration this year, but I'd, I'd like to, um, bring this item to Mr. Miko's Education Subcommittee, because we're talking about curriculum, um, and, and where it falls in the curriculum, and I, I would imagine Dr. Chase would assist with that somehow, and, um, you guys can work that out. But I'm okay pulling back on that, um, for the purposes of the conversation tonight. Uh, item 10, um, I don't know that it was ever my true intent to have this custodians and, and tradespeople brought back into our budget this year. Uh, it's not practical, not realistic. Um, I think the mayor had brought, or talked about this at the opening of this meeting tonight. Um, I'm hoping we'll put a plan together through building and grounds with the cooperation, you know, with the, um, in collaboration with the, with the city, and, you know, this is also a bargaining issue, so we'll probably have to deal with a lot of layers on this, so that's fine, I'm not necessarily interested in that, in this budget. Um, I did talk about maintenance, and putting 400,000 dollars into a line for maintenance, and I see that Mr. Rippon, um, did communicate with Mr. Gingrich on this subject, and if I can, through the mayor, ask Mr. Rippon, uh, I see the email thread that you provided to us, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for looking into this. And, um, on your email to Mr. Gingrich on May 24, um, about, I don't know, three-quarters of the way down, the third, the last paragraph starts, "I see the sum. We have 705,000 dollars budgeted for both outside services and materials and supplies." Are you talking about 705,000 dollars within the school department budget, or 705,000 dollars on the city side budget?
Both, combined.
Combined.
Because again, it's a combined budget.
What, what, I'm, I'm confused as to what, what do you mean by combined budget?
There's not a segregated budget. The, the, in fact, in the packet you have, um, those lines are for the entire city. City buildings, school buildings, combined. It's not segregated.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's a city operating budget.
City budget, yeah.
But it is meant for the whole...
For all, all the municipal...
But it is just solely under the city budget.
The city bu, just so I can be clear, the city budget has a line identified for maintenance, uh, for all city, all municipal buildings, including the school buildings?
Correct. It's just not listed as school or city, it's, it's just listed as maintenance under the city budget.
No, okay, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something within the school budget that's before us, um, that we're going to vote on. So, so I, I do see that. And I do see Mr. Gingrich's, um, response and, and his opinion regarding a variety of items that were brought up, including, um, the opportunity for perhaps some capital, um, expenses here. And I'm not sure that that necessarily incorporates what... And I'm not sure that that necessarily incorporates what I was envisioning either, because I don't know that the maintenance items that I was talking about are capital improvements. I don't know that they're not. Mike and Mr. Gingrich and others would know more about that stuff than I would. But I don't know that balancing an HVAC system is a capital improvement. I don't think that it is. And so in any event, I do, I think I see that the response that we received from the superintendent and presuming Mr. Rippon and others on the administrative team indicate that there's a line that is created in this budget for one hundred and six thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars for maintenance. I don't know, you know, Mr. Gingrich in his email talks about, and I think he's right, I think he's right. What does he say? "The facilities department has been tasked to maintain systems and buildings that have had maintenance and system upgrades deferred, deferred because of other competing priorities in school budgets for many years." And that's, that hits it on the head. That's why I'm asking for four hundred thousand dollars to be put into this budget, not as a pilot, not as a one-time line, but get back to what we, you know, got away from too long ago when budgets were tight. And I get when we have the choice of a teacher, or, you know, a speech therapist, or even as, you know, security personnel, when we have, you know, real issues that are people in front of kids and, you know, being able to take care of our kids and our staff's safety, and being able to make sure that, you know, services that kids require, whether it's through IEPs or just because it's our obligation to provide those services, you know, then the choice is to cut maintenance, because we're not gonna cut services for kids. We're not gonna cut safety for anyone in our buildings. But now, and for the last three years, I hate to say it, we're flush, right? We're flush. Two years ago, we did a budget by Zoom, I think it was, and it was one of the hardest things we could, I dealt with by Zoom during that, you know, COVID time, because, you know, we were in different places trying to, we can't even find the right tabs when we're sitting here in the same room. We have a hard time with it, we have to go through stuff. So it was very difficult two years ago. And then last year, it seemed like we were coming out of the COVID haze when it came to budget, and we let a lot of stuff go through. And, you know, now, I'm glad we're finally having these conversations and putting the list together, as the mayor kind of said. I'm not willing to back off four hundred thousand dollars, is what I'm saying. I want four hundred thousand dollars on a maintenance line. I think that Gingrich, Mr. Gingrich is right, that we would then need to prioritize or work on where that money is spent, and that's our job, right? That's our job, and we can do it through building and grounds. I appreciate Mr. Rippon's, you know, concern about most of these items would take place during the summer, and it's too late to do that. Well, I get that. For me, it's too late not to fund this line, right? We should have funded it last year, we should have funded it the year before that. We probably should have funded it for the 15 years I'm here, but we haven't. And, you know, at some point, we just gotta say, we're doing it. And we don't need to identify where that four hundred thousand dollars is going today. We just need to earmark it. We need to put it aside, set it aside. However, I am willing to do this. I would be willing to do this. I want four hundred thousand dollars. I'm willing to reduce it to three hundred thousand dollars for maintenance if fifty thousand dollars goes to the music, art, and drama programs for equipment, which they desperately need, and fifty thousand dollars goes to the athletic department for equipment that they desperately need. You know, for those of us that, you know, remember, what was it, the PBD Times? That, you know, we used to see photographs, there used to be a lot more coverage of our sporting events and things like that. Well, I pulled up an old copy, I think it was from 1983, and it showed the hurdles at PBD High School, and they said Knights of Columbus on them, because they were donated by the Knights of Columbus. I looked at the Salem News that covered a track event at PBD High in 2022. And you know what hurdles were used in that picture? Knights of Columbus. It's time for, you know, for us to get away from some of these, I'm gonna say it, administrative positions that have been added without our voting on them, and getting to providing better equipment. You know, Mr. D'Amico talks about why kids aren't going to PBD High School, right? Because they're going to athletic programs that have state-of-the-art equipment. And we've done a lot this year, right? We've done a lot with the weight room, we've done a lot with things. But I hear from, from coaches, I hear from, that we can't host certain events, track events, because we don't have sufficient equipment to host track events. And what is that doing? That, we're losing money on that, because we're paying for transportation more than it cost us for the equipment, right? Plus inconveniencing, you know, our staff and our student athletes to travel into other districts to participate, and losing gate receipts perhaps, and other things. You know, PBD's, we're the hub, right? You know, we talk about being, being the hub of the North Shore. And we can't host conference track events because we have inadequate equipment. And I'm not, you know, so when I talk about maintenance, I'm talking about equipment to keep our fieldhouse. I've talked to, you know, people up there, and they say they can't even clean the fieldhouse because they don't have enough staff members to do it, and they don't have the type of machinery that, you know, exists here at the Higgins. So I'm not necessarily talking about contracted services. I'm talking about whatever is required to maintain our buildings. And if that includes some sort of device or mechanized, you know, apparatus that's able to keep our fieldhouse in proper order so that we can have a good, safe, clean, healthy environment for our kids and our staff to work and learn and prosper, and host events, that's what I'm talking about. So please keep my four hundred thousand dollars on the, on the list. And like I said, I'm willing to break it up a little bit, if it's so desired by other committee members, to include or incorporate some needs of a couple of other departments. And I'll identify the areas where we can find that money, if that's where we plan on going today. I, I'm not terribly comfortable going to Tuesday to get information and wait on stuff. And I understand that that's not necessarily anyone's fault at this point, but we have a, we have a public hearing on Tuesday. I don't want to come together, back together tomorrow. I'd like to get this thing wrapped up today, if possible. And if I can, I know I've spoken a long time, but if I can get back to an item that Ms. Carpenter brought up a long time ago, and perhaps ask Dr. Higgins through the chair, if he's able to answer something for me. On the school, was it security, I forget what we called it, buildings, building monitors, right? Yeah. Are most of the high school building monitors that we have, are they coaches that, you know, work as coaches and, or have other positions, and then we kind of, they're, they work as, within the building because they're familiar with the kids and stuff like that? Is that kind of how most of them?
I, excuse me, I know that some of them are coaches. I don't know, like, the total number that are. I know a few, obviously, offhand, that coach, but I would say, you know, maybe half have coaching positions at the, at the high school.
Thank you, yeah, Dr. Higgins, I think that that's about right. I mean, that's what I see when I walk around. What I'd like to do, Ms. Carpenter, is if you're gonna bring that up, I'd like to give our coaches the first opportunity for those positions, because they're people that probably know kids and their siblings that might be down at the middle school, might be able to identify a little more with them because of their interactions with, with students and things like that. And, and, you know, we pay our, I think our coaches may be in line with, with what is paid in the region, but it's really not a lot of money for what they do. And if we can assist them somehow, I'd like to see that. So if you can, if you're gonna make that motion at some point and incorporate that, I would, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Open it up for further comments. Mr. D'Amico?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Hockman, I agree with you on that. Ms. Dunn, through the chair, Ms. Dunn had brought up the Kylie School many years ago, and how the board at the time, the committee at the time, had to make a decision between teachers, and I think it was three hundred thousand dollars. I look at this, we're not making a decision on teachers or anything. This, you know, and let's face it, this is, this budget isn't that tight. There's some discretionary spending in there, we've already found some. I agree with you on the three hundred thousand. Had we done that six, seven years ago, 10 years ago, the Kylie might not be at this number that we're at now. So I think moving three hundred thousand into that maintenance would certainly work. From day one that we got back from COVID, I said every dollar from Esser should be going back to kids and teachers. And unfortunately, that hasn't happened. And it's our duty to make sure it starts happening, because this is the last one. And I would certainly support fifty thousand dollars to athletics and fifty thousand dollars to our performing arts. So I just wanted to thank you for bringing those two up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Mr. Olympio?
Thank you. So just a thought in going forward, we're beating ourselves up here, trying to find money, trying to find additions and subtractions. But maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a whole other piece that I feel like is missing. And going forward, I think, you know, we should probably pay closer attention to it, is grants that are not part of the budget. I think we need to get a better handle on where's that money going? How is it being spent? Because it could answer some of, if we had discretion to make changes within the grants, because it's in our purview, to handle, the grants aren't part of the budget. But if we could reallocate certain funds in some of these grants, that could then make us feel more comfortable with some of these subtractions that we're reallocating to the budget. So yes, we are voting on the budget tonight, but it's all our responsibility. It's our fiduciary responsibility to review all of the monies. And I think Ms. Dunn might have asked for a breakdown earlier this week of all of the money coming in. And certainly, a number is good, but I want to know how that money is being spent. I want to know exactly where is it going? Because then, that'll make us better educated on our wants and needs within the budget. So I would say, you know, certainly, I know we're running tight and all that. But going forward, I mean, that's the way we have to operate. If it's a quarterly meeting under finance, we need to know how are these grants being spent? And then I think we'll be much better prepared going forward with what's presented to us in the budget. Because I feel like some of this is blind. I don't know where exactly all of that grant money is going, and how it's being allocated. So I think if all of us had a better idea on that, we could certainly probably make some of these choices a little easier. I'll yield for now, thank you.
Through the chair to Superintendent Chase, there are federal rules that supersede even the school committee with respect to supplanting versus supplementing the entitlement grant. You just can't decide as a committee, we'll lose four million dollars or better. But I'll leave it to-
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So I did create a breakdown of the grants. The grants that I chase after have to do with more along the curriculum line. So for example, I listed the civics implementation fund code. And typically, where that money goes is to teacher stipends, so they can participate in PD and get paid for their time outside of contractual hours, and then in consultants for training or coaching for teachers. So one of the questions that is often asked within the grants is how will you sustain it beyond the grant funding? So if they give you one or two years, you don't put it into people, because when that grant goes away, we can't sustain that. So what they make you do is justify how you can sustain it. And the way we do that is through training, stipends for teachers, and consultants. And those are usually the big buckets. I usually put a little bit, if we need supplies, like books to do the training, that that will go in there as well. And I can go through each of the grants, but everything from the civics implementation to the civic showcase, to Holocaust genocide studies, evidence-based practices, is really putting money in teachers' pockets so that they get the critical training that they, that they need.
And that's wonderful, and thank you. But I would, again, this isn't a criticism, it's just on a piece of paper, part of the package, and I'm not disagreeing with what you said either. But we're just, I'm just a little uncomfortable with saying, okay, that sounds good. I'd like to see, I like to see the money, and I'd like to see where is it going exactly? I know what you just said to me, but let's see it on paper. Maybe it's the auditor in me, but that's, that's all I'm saying. Because then, we're not, I just feel like we're missing some information. You know, just as we're going through this, I'm not expecting that tonight. But going forward, I do think we need to get a better handle specifics. I mean, here it is, this is who we've hired, this is where it's going, this is what type of supplies we're buying with it. Great, we'll all be better informed for it. And I just feel like that piece was missing this budget season. It's just, and it frustrated me a little. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with Mr. Olympio. I think it's twofold. It's obviously our fiduciary responsibility to understand where all the monies are coming in. But on the, on the other flip side of that is obviously, Dr. Chase is pulling all this in as well. And in fairness to you and all the teachers, we can also do a better job in understanding how well we're doing for those teachers, you're doing for those teachers, and what they're receiving, and communicate better as well for ourselves. So I would agree that, I think, on a quarterly basis, we should be reviewing all of our spending, all of our financials, what was coming in and what is going out. It'll make us a better board, better committee and understanding. It'll also allow us to obviously give you praise for, more praise for what you're doing as well. And I think it'll show how well we're doing for our community and our teachers as well. Both sides of that.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mrs. Dunn?
I'm gonna hit three different topics, but overall, I think what everything has in common here is what we have is a problem with communication. I don't mean to speak for every one of the school committee members, I'll speak for myself, but I think I'm saying what they are. We are not receiving the information we need to make good decisions and to be able to respond to the people we represent. We are here speaking for them. And I can guarantee every one of us has heard from someone who said, "I don't understand your budget. What is the money for?" Okay? Now, I had requested a list of grants, I got the entitlement grants. I can pull that offline, no offense. I can go on to the DESE website and pull down the entitlement grants, and I can dig and figure out where the money went and what it was for. We need the amount of money that comes into this district that consists of entitlement grants, private grants, grants that have been requested by staff, and revenue from programs, and rentals, and fees. That is something that would be helpful to me, and I think it would be helpful to the other members when we're looking at the budget. Because what we put out to the public is what we're spending. But we are not showing where that money comes from. We give a line of chapter 70, we give a line of chapter 74. But we don't explain it to the taxpayers who are actually very interested in what the money is supporting. I'm looking at a one-page sheet, you'll get this book on Tuesday, that consists of seven million dollars in grants. It is very simple. It says federal entitlements, and it lists them with the dollar amount. And at the bottom, there's a total of one million seven hundred and nine thousand one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Then I have state grants. Those are all listed with the amounts. And then we have competitive, private, and other grants and donations. Those are listed. This is for Essex North Shore. And I try very hard not to compare, but it is really, really hard not to, when I can see the information I need in one place and I can't get that information from another. This leads into another discussion. It isn't just about the money on grants. We're looking for how much money is being spent on the schools to maintain them. And I'm gonna tell you my own personal request, and my own personal experience with this. I, as a school committee member, am charged by the state with the responsibility of maintaining facilities for the education of our students. Even if that duty has been taken by the municipality, it is still the school committee that feels responsible for the condition of these buildings. And in order to try to provide that kind of oversight, we need information. It is not being given. And you know, I have sent emails, I have made very specific questions on various pieces of facility needs in this district, and I get no responses from our facilities department. We could take a two-minute recess right now- get no responses from our facilities department. We could take a two-minute recess right now, walk down that hallway, and I will show you a piece of equipment that's been hanging on a wall for over two years. I have requested information on it was going to be repaired. It may have been able to be repaired during its warranty period, but I can't even find out any information about warranties. I couldn't even find out information of where the warranties for this building are being maintained. And we made a policy about where the warranty information was going to be maintained. When we built this building, MSBA made us hire a facilities director, and we did that. That was to be able to maintain the facilities. I am concerned about that chiller at the Carroll School, because I want to know exactly what goes into that, if that had anything to do with air handling or anything. I want to see whether we were keeping up with our contractual, our contracted services. Because years ago, the school committee would be faced with the tough decision of putting off maintenance issues to be able to maintain the teaching staff or teaching supplies. And we would forego the other supplies, which is why every year, the parents got a note home from the principal asking for the donation of paper towels, toilet paper, and Kleenex for the classroom. Having a facilities director and revamping the ordering system and the supply system, it does seem to be making a difference. But if I ask a question about it, I can't get an answer. Now, here's what I'd like. Mr. Hockman's asking for $400,000 dedicated to the maintenance of our buildings. If someone can show me in the city budget what the amount of money dedicated to maintenance of our buildings is, I'd feel comfortable knowing that, well, at least it's $400,000. I'd feel even better if I got a memo that explained what it was. If I'm not allowed to vote on it, fine. But I want it published to this board, because then it becomes a public document and shows how much is being spent. Who's in charge of that duty? And where is the paperwork on all of this? We have a drainage system here that is governed by an agreement with the Conservation Commission, and for three years, they've tried to get that thing, they have tried to get that document verified on who is responsible for cleaning the drains. Simple, simple. Just give me an answer, and I can't get it. If I sound frustrated, you have no idea of how frustrated I really am. But those are the types of things that I think you are hearing about here. And again, I don't want to speak for anyone else. I'm speaking for myself. But I've been here long enough to know the difference between getting information and not getting information. We are not getting the information we need. Right now, I feel like I am going into this budget blind on a lot of different issues, some not necessarily encased in this budget, such as the maintenance issue. But getting the information in dribs and drabs has been difficult. Getting it the day of a meeting has been very difficult. The only time we're allowed to talk about this is here in this meeting. And that's been difficult too, because now we're under the gun to make decisions. This is a good budget. There's a lot of good, good programming going on. There are a lot of great things in here. I don't think we have a ton of work to do on this budget as opposed to years past, where we really would go line by line by line. It's just, right now, I think we've all kept this under, at least I've kept it in for a long time, and I can't anymore. And that's how I feel. And as far as Mr. Hockman, I support the $400,000. But I will tell you, if I can see it in writing, that it's there somewhere, I don't care whether it's on the city side or the school side, as long as it's $400,000 that's being used to make sure these buildings are being upkept, that would make me feel a lot better. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Dunn, I'm gonna push back a little bit on you, because every year on the city budget, and it's been this way forever, we have line items for building maintenance, building supplies, building materials. And every budget we present that's voted on in full by the city council, there's a complete breakdown of every outside service, every dollar that's spent as to where it's going. So it does exist, and it's a part of the city budget that I presented to the city council now every year.
Okay, just send us a copy.
I mean, it's public record. I'm happy to do that, but it's public record. I mean, all you gotta do is-
It's public record. I'm an elected official. I'm just asking for something.
Go on our city website and look at it, or, you know, I mean, ask me for that.
I certainly will go on the website. You know I will.
And now you just asked me for, and I will get it to you. But it is, it is, it's been a part of every city budget that I've ever presented. When we voted as a committee, when we all voted as a committee to put it into city, it goes now on the city budget. It's part of the city budget. And every year, I present the city budget, and it's listed as it is in this book, even actually, to be truthful, more detailed, because we put every bill that comes in and where it goes. So, you know, all the outside services, all that is a part of the city budget that's voted on every year.
I understand that. I do. How about this, as a courtesy, could the school committee be sent a memo with the maintenance budget, with the line items, so that we could see where the money's going? Because what we have here from Mr. Gingrich does not explain. Our buildings are in with the other buildings. And that's, that's one thing that I'm asking.
The other thing, and I think you're, you're right, you're right. We should, you should have that. But the other thing I do want to mention is a lot of the stuff is also part of our debt service. So last night, for example, we got unanimous approval, which was great from the city council, to fund, it was $180,000, and it included the Carroll School chillers and the high school HVAC control system. It was a total of about $1 million. But we were able, through grants and other things, to be able to pay about $800,000. The delta was 180 that the council supported yesterday. In addition to that, there was $325,000 for the center school asbestos abatement and tiling project that we're gonna be doing this summer. So some of that is in there as well. So you're, you're right. That has to be a part of it. But I just didn't want to give the perception to people that, you know, because there is, we do break it down, but we should be, and it is part of the city budget. But you're right, it's not coming to you, and it should.
Right. It's a communication issue.
It is.
And it's a courtesy. Because, yes, we did vote, I didn't like it, but we did vote to put facilities on the city side. We do, as a school committee, still maintain the ability to take that back. Now, that would be slicing our own throat, so I'm gonna say it right here. $4 million out of our budget would be awful for the schools, for the programs that we provide. You on the city side taking the $4 million for facilities is fine. But under the law, if the majority of this school committee voted to take that back, we can do that.
And I think-
And I don't think we would. I wouldn't. I wouldn't. But if you, if you could please help us to be able to at least make sure our buildings are being maintained. And it's not the custodians. It is, they're cleaning. I'm talking about broken floors, leaky roofs, equipment, things that are not being paid attention to. And people are being notified about it. And, and nothing is being done on some of those things. That's the frustration. So I will stop now before I really get in trouble. But-
I think you and I could go round and round on this for a while.
I know.
Because I, there are things being done, but the problem there is, it's not being communicated to you.
Not being communicated, and no response.
So that's, that's our, that's our, that's, and that's why I'm open to actually bringing it back. I want to have that discussion.
The money would follow the employees. We wouldn't lose more than that.
I don't think we, I don't think the mayor would ask us to take a $4 million hit.
No, no, I know. I was working around numbers. But yeah.
But also, I mean, also keep in mind, you know, and this is something that comes up every budget when, you know, we're talking about the numbers. You know, we have four full-time police officers assigned to the school. That comes out of the city budget. Our whole nurses, nurses, every, you know, all of the, the nurses and the materials and supplies and everything, that comes out of the city budget. The debt service for school projects, that comes out of the city budget. So like, a lot of times, people ask me, oh, you know, what does this number mean? You know, it's a percent increase or whatever percent increase. I'm like, yeah, but you're not factoring in the $4 million in maintenance, the $500,000 from the police department, the $1 million plus on the nurses' side, the debt service. So it's, that's why they're so intertwined in so many ways, the city and the school budget. And, you know, I, I think, you know, there's always been a level of trust that exists, which I think continues. But the problem is, it's being eroded because of lack of communication. So we have to get that, Mrs. Dunn. You're 100% right. You should know what, where the money is going in our facilities department. It goes to the city council, but it's not going to this, this board, and it needs to be.
I mean, honestly, whatever you do to the water plant, good for you. But what you're doing to the Higgins of the Carroll, or the Welch, or any other school, I'd hate to know. Because those questions from the public come to me.
Well, we do, we are doing a lot at the Welch School.
Hey.
You may know a little bit about that.
I do. And don't get me started. I can give you examples. The roof leaked. It's been leaking for 12 years. We fixed up the building. The roof's still leaking. Now we're trying to find out, is that section of the roof warranted? It should be. And it's going to figure in on the cost.
Can we bring the conversation back to the budget, please? I appreciate the two of you.
No, this is, no, this is-
Listen, it's the only way I can get a hold of him without locking him in a car and putting him on the phone.
Oh, please, Mrs. Dunn. That goes both ways.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I was gonna ask for a five-minute recess, but I don't think we're gonna benefit from that at this point. So can I ask, through the chair, to the committee members, have we finished the, the list that we went around the room when we started this meeting? Have we, if anyone else has something to add, please do so, because then I'd like to start working on where we're gonna fund it.
I do. I have one on here. It's slump number nine. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I had requested this and actually spoke with Dr. Vidal. He told me that the current stipend for the Raiders competition team is $1,700. And he was open to a discussion to adjust that amount. And I, I would like to propose that we provide at least $3,000 as a stipend. Honestly, it should be $5,000. If you would do five, I think that would be an extreme show of support, not only to our staff, but to the federal government. They are looking to see what support we are providing to the program. There are several issues that do need to be addressed. This is not specifically one, but it does show how much that program means to our students and that we are trying to provide for the, for the staff. They work year-round. They are on a teacher's contract, but the instructors work year-round. And it's similar to an athletic competition. And they've done really well too. Just, not that that is a factor, but it's something you could be very proud of. So I'd like to make a motion that we increase that to $5,000. All right. Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor? Just by way of clarification through you to Ms. Dunn, you're asking for an additional $3,300?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
You also, Mrs. Dunn? Okay, open it up.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that now completes the list. Okay, so now I think we're gonna look at items of reduction? Is that how you want to proceed, Mr. Mayor?
I wanted to get everything out on the table, which, I mean, yeah, we're looking at 560,000 plus.
562,152.
562,16, 152 on the plus, 106,676 that's in the budget. The net to balance, based on these numbers, is $455,476.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Miko? I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Miko, it's-
Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, thank you. I did want to, before we start our additions, subtractions, I did request, through Dr. Vidal and our business manager, a list of all of our employees and salaries and, and all of our payouts that we sign off on every, every two weeks. And I, and I just wanted to ask Mr. Rippon one question. We have two, these two positions, Director of Teaching, Learning, Math, and Science, and Director of Student Services. Do those two positions have anyone that reports directly to them?
I would-
In the budget?
I would-
And I don't know, through the chair, maybe-
I would defer to Dr. Higgins for the student services, one, and to Dr. Kelly, I mean, Dr. Chase for the, for the STEM one.
I can speak for the Director of Student Services that there's not a staff member that reports directly to that person, to that position.
And I would say, ask the same question to Dr. Chase.
So for directors, they do evaluate people, but they don't have a direct report?
Okay, great. Through the chair, and, and thank you. And, and I'm looking through all these positions here, and, and, you know, we've spoken that next year and the year after are going to be tight positions. I mean, those are gonna be really difficult positions. ESAR is going away. And you know what? We're this close to falling into a recession. I don't have to, you know, talk about that, what happens down the road with those. So, you know, and I'm looking right through here, and there are, there are two to three positions here that personally, I believe, first of all, I'd like to say that over the last five to six years, I've really pushed to make our central office whole. I really, you know, and being in education for 23 years, talking to people from all over the state, I just couldn't believe that we had a superintendent and then maybe one assistant in, in a district this size with all the needs. So one of my purposes was to really make that central office whole. And I really think we have, and we've done an incredible job with a superintendent, two incredibly qualified, you know, assistant superintendents who are here today. But I do have questions about, you know, some of the, some other positions that I feel as though are a little bit on a duplicate end and are, come at a high cost. You know, and, and some of these positions come at a cost higher than, than principals and assistant principals and our sped director. And, and to me, when we're, when we're looking at this budget, we're trying to find $300,000 or so to, to, to help the maintenance in our, in our schools, or, or, you know, $50,000 for our athletic program, or, or even $3,300 for our junior ROTC program, with, in the amount that those kids do. I, I just, I just wonder that we really need to start thinking about kids and teachers, students and teachers first, and then moving on there. And I, and I really do think that, you know, and, and this isn't, it, it's, it's nothing against anyone, but it's, it's there. It's, it's, it's very highlighted in a sense that that's a lot of money. You know, I've looked up two to three positions, and we're talking $148,000, $137,000 for essentially assistance to assistance. And, and, and to me, when we're, we're looking at potential cuts next year or the year after, you know, I, I wonder if that's money well spent. I, I wonder if that's, that's something that we should be looking at, if not now, in the future to, to reduce. Because I'll tell you right now, this time next year, I'm not reducing one teacher or one para. There's no way. Not after what we've been through with this budget here. There's absolutely no way. So it's gonna come from somewhere. And I just wanted to put that out there to the committee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miko.
Yep, please, Dr. Chase.
So just to address the question about directors, I've been in a number of districts. This is the leanest district in terms of the number of directors to support the work. We've pulled in over a million dollars worth of grant funding over the next couple of years. And part of the reason for that is because we've been able to show the Department of Education that we have the capacity to support teachers in that work. So that's super important when we want to be able to push a new curriculum forward, when we don't want to leave teachers hanging without support. And in order for our teachers to be supported, those are the key roles that do that. So I can't be in every school every single day. I'm often doing the work behind the curtain so that we can write those grants, pull them in, but I cannot possibly oversee them on my own. And if we really want to support teachers, and we really want to, you know, exceed expectations at the state and not just meet them, that competitive spirit, we do need that additional help to, to do that.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Chase. Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Rippon might be the one to answer this. What's the, where do I see the line for the Director of Student Services in our budget?
You wouldn't. You wouldn't, because it's paid for out of the IDEA grant.
Okay. I, I know- Okay. I, I know about 15 minutes ago, I heard Dr. Chase talking about grants and how we use grants, and we don't use them to pay for salaries, because we need to show how we're gonna continue with salaries after the end of the grant. So, why is the Director of Student Services paid out of the IDEA grant?
Because that position is under special education, and Dr. Chase's grant, grants are not a regular education. So, Shannon Crompton, the director, we'll call it the special ed cluster, that's, that's where you, you know, Dr. Chase is not directly responsible for those grants.
I wasn't suggesting that. I was just, I was talking about the philosophy. Yeah. Sorry, Dr. Chase. I didn't mean to, okay.
So, there are several types of grants. Some of them are called entitlement grants. I was asked to report out on competitive grants. And then there's a third column called targeted grants. So, we meet certain criteria, and we'd be eligible for those. So, I think what you're speaking to in terms of salaries would be part of those entitlement grants and not competitive ones.
Thank you. I, I think it's just not a good practice to put salaries in grants necessarily. But in any event, what is the amount of that grant allocated for the Director of Student Services?
Currently, what's in the, and again, that position is, it's currently paid, which was presented to you all, is 136,578. So, that's what would be allocated for that position.
And, thank you, Mr. Rippon. And again, through the mayor, through the mayor to you, what do we use as a, I don't know if it's called a placeholder, or what do we use as a, as a benchmark for benefits to an employee? So, in other words, this person, this, this position has a salary of 136,578, and then their benefit package has a value, too?
Generally, the, the city pays 85%, but depends on whether the, assuming family coverage, I, I think 25,000 is a good placeholder for benefits.
On the city side, we do 20,000 as a placeholder.
20,000? That, that's fair. I'll use 20,000. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then, I, I didn't get the, the full title. I'm looking, it's Director of, in, in our book, it's a split salary, Director of Teaching and Learning. I think this is the position that Dr. Chase was talking about, Teaching and Learning for STEM. Is that what the title is?
So, there are two major curriculum directors. One would be for STEM, and then the other covers Humanities.
And through, Mr. The mayor, maybe to Dr. Chase, if you can, I'm looking in the, in the tab 22 of the budget book, and I see a Director of Teaching and Learning, and then I see a Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology. I think it's budget line. Is it, actually, I don't know what budget line it really, it is. Is it 22014? Or 015, maybe?
Educational technology with the 14, and.
So, when I go to the backup, it's the third, the second page of the backup, the top part of the grid.
Oh, right. It's, it's, it's a common, I'm sorry, it's a combination. Half of, half of the salary is budgeted in the operating budget, and the other half is budgeted on, on grants.
Okay. So, to start with, what's the title of that position, or those positions that are so budgeted?
One is, at least here, it's, one is Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, and the other is Director of Teaching and Learning.
Yeah. So, the Director of Teaching and Learning, if I can now ask through the mayor to Dr. Chase, what, what is that, the, the actual title?
So, I think what's happening there is that it was in a position that when we went to a STEM in Humanities, it probably just wasn't captured in that, in that narrative. But it's, it's those two positions.
So, that position, the, the position that's identified as Director of Teaching and Learning in our budget book, are they doing both the math and other side, or?
No. One does STEM, one does Humanities.
So, there are two positions in this. One person does STEM, and one does Humanities?
Yes.
I got you. So, which, the, which one does, and I don't want to mention any names here in this, right? So, the, the top line that says Director of Teaching and Learning, is that STEM or Humanities?
That's STEM.
STEM. Okay. And they're budgeted, that, that position is half-budgeted through a grant and half-budgeted in our, in our regular operating budget?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the total amount allocated for that position?
In the operating budget, and a similar amount on the grant, so twi, and twice that, roughly 270,000, of which 135 is here, and 135 is on, on grants.
I'm sorry, for those two positions?
Correct.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So, if you can all bear with me for one second. I'm going old school with the math and doing it by hand. So, and, and, Mr. Mayor, if I can, again, through you to Mr. Rippon, what was the number we're chasing? What was the number you said we need?
Roughly, I mean, round number, 455,000.
And does that include the 106,000 that was identified?
Yeah, yes. That's already offset. Otherwise, it'd be a bigger number we'd be chasing.
So, 455,000 is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, good. And so, I'm, I'm gonna start this process by making a couple of motions, if that's all right with the committee. One is to eliminate the Director of Student Services, which should net with a $20,000 placeholder for benefits, 156,578. So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, Mr. Hockman, could you, again, I, one line item?
It's not a line item, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's a grant.
This is from the grant?
Yes. And then I'm assuming that we can use that grant for other things that are within the budget in the tune of 156,578.
All right. Motion was made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any comments on this motion? Mr. Swanson?
Yes. Quite frankly, I'd like to ask Dr. Chase what, what this position has helped you with over the last year that's been in place. I'm sorry. It was at the, Dr. Higgins, I'm sorry. Yeah. No, that's, that's quite right. A lot of our work around student, preventive student discipline, work around IEPs, 504, so Individual Education Plans for Students, Bartifications, 504 plans, relooking at some of the policies and guidelines around those. So, student behavior, supporting administrators at all three levels, particularly elementary and middle school. So, a lot of, you made the, behind the, behind the curtain, a lot of the, the safety proactive, proactive measures, I think, takes place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair to maybe Dr. Higgins, I'm not sure. Did we have this position last year? Who, who did that work last year? Or not who, or did it exist?
It did not exist.
Did any of the positions that we've been discussing exist?
So, you had a Director of Curriculum?
Okay. But the Director of Student Services, we did not have, right?
Yeah. There was an assistant Special Education Director that was in the budget.
Yeah.
So, that position was taken out, and then, I don't want to say replace, but that position is no longer in the budget, and the Director of Student Services, beginning last school year, was renewed.
Through the chair, Ms. Chase, these positions that we have funded fully and some partially through grants, when do those grants expire for their funding?
Those are entitlement grants, so we have those renewed each year, and you can supplement with those grants.
You can supplement with those grants. Okay. So, just a couple of things I want to point out. We've, we've talked a lot about this budget process. We've talked a lot about grants and communication. First of all, Mr. Rippon, I'd just like to say that I'm very sorry that this is the first experience you're having with us with this budget. I think it's been very fluid for us since COVID, and things have changed every single year. And I think that members of this committee are trying to get back to the way it was maybe five or six years ago. And that looked more like a much longer process, a more involved process. So, I apologize for my first experiences with you being in this manner, but it's generally not that way. We're kind of under the gun, so this looks a lot different than I think it will next year. I would also expect that we have, we used to have the budget as a standing-line item, so you could update us on things. So, it really didn't get to this point. In regards to the grants, all grants must be accepted by the school committee. Anything that has financial responsibility, our responsibility, anything that involves money does come over to us. And that includes positions, any new positions. Generally, we don't go through the lines of a grant. But I think times like this, where there's a lot of communication missing, you know, and we need to answer to a lot of people, we would need to see those grants and where the money is going. And I just feel that this process unfortunately is not going that great, because we're kind of under the gun. So, I, I just want to let everybody know that normally, we don't, but we are supposed to accept a grant. We are supposed to, and we can look at those lines. In any new positions also come to us as well. So, you know, with that being said, I think trying to find money unfortunately is gonna fall through, which, through grants, which I just want to say thank you very much for all of the work you've done on the grants. I do appreciate it. But I just think we need to work a little bit together more to see where those things are going, so that we're not under the gun at this point. So, with that being said, I just wanted to clarify, you know, did we have these positions before? But it sounds like we, we did not. I'm good.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Miko?
And thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for bringing that up. And not only did we not have those positions, but I, I don't think we had the opportunity to vote on them and, and look at the total financial impact. So, for that reason, I would be supporting Mr. Hockman's motion as well.
Okay. We have the motion on the floor. Mr. Swanson?
Sorry, just for my clarity, this first motion is just for Director of Student Services?
Through the mayor, yes, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hockman, you still have the floor?
Thank you. And I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the difficulty that we're having, because it should be difficult when we're starting to talk about eliminating or reducing positions. This isn't done lightly. This is done, and maybe Mrs. Carpenter, you know, best stated it. And I'll leave it there. So, I know that it, we, we talked about whether these positions existed or didn't exist. We did have curriculum directors, but that I think was before we had two assistant superintendents, and that we had directors instead of assistant superintendents. And then, we were asked as a committee to increase the administration by, and not, and, and we have two wonderful assistant superintendents who worked, worked their butts off for our school district, for our kids, for our staff, for a whole, you know, to, to make things a lot better than they were. And I know I came along slowly when it came to adding some administration, and it's not because of either one of them personally. It's because I thought we might be getting a little too top-heavy. And I could say that I'm comfortable with the administration with both of those assistant superintendents. And the roles that existed, or maybe didn't exist before we took on those positions and those, those, I'm, I'm a little less comfortable with some of that. And that was maybe the origin of the first motion I made, and it's gonna be the origin of the second motion I make. And I understand, you know, Dr. Chase, and your defense of the position, and I'm glad that you're defending this position, because it's, you're the department head, if you will, for this position, and you should be defending those positions. But the, and I understand that you're saying that this maybe impacts some grants, and, and, and I don't, maybe there's a way to have this, those functions filled at a lower, at a, at a administrative assistant level or something. I'm not quite sure what it is. I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job. And I, and I, I don't pretend to necessarily understand completely your job, because I don't, I don't have your area of expertise or knowledge. But I'm looking at some significant numbers on some positions, and I'm looking at some desires that this school committee has to implement in this coming year. So, I'm just gonna pull the Band-Aid off and make the motion. The, I'm gonna make a motion to reduce the, or eliminate the position of Director of, I still don't know how to call it, Director of Teaching, and the one we talked about, Teaching and Learning for STEM, which I believe comes at a salary of 135,952, which is bifurcated between our operating budget and the grant, and then a benchmark or placeholder of 20,000 for benefits would yield, or net 155,952 back to our budget for our use in the areas that we've identified in the list. So, I'm gonna move to eliminate that position of Director of Teaching and Learning for STEM. So moved.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Dr. Chase, I'd like to turn it over to her.
I would like to say that beyond administrative duties in terms of keeping up with paperwork related to grants, that is a small piece of that job. There's a huge piece that's leadership, and again, supporting teachers. And by supporting teachers, we're supporting kids. We've seen changes in data because of these positions. We've seen better quality materials put into the hands of teachers. We've seen them through big changes along the way, and would hope to be able to continue to do that in the future. So, those have been critical pieces to the team, and I worry about the impact on students.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Chase, can I ask you a couple of questions? I had the privilege of coming to the Civic Showcase, and I know that the person who was running that was one of the, was the Director of Humanities, okay? So, that, that's, that's one of the projects that was going on. Can you tell us any of the others that have gone on, or some of the duties that, that took place because of that, that position?
So, we think of the Holocaust and Genocide Studies, those requirements. There's been a ton of professional development that's been coordinated behind the scenes that goes along with that position. On the other hand, on the science end, we were awarded a grant from Project Lead the Way, and that will help our technology teachers here at the middle school get their hands on some high-quality materials that they haven't been able to participate in or have professional development on. There's another project that allowed us to get ST math in all of our K through five buildings. That's a program that costs thousands of dollars per building and comes with some professional development that's critical for students. And we were able, with the help of that position, to convince that team. And we were able, with the help of that position, to convince that team to fund all eight of our buildings. So those are some of the projects. When we have high-quality instructional materials, they're the folks who lead the way on those meetings. They get to follow up with teachers to get the input, put those pieces together. They are critical in helping to pull together data to write those grants. Behind the scenes, they work with our Renaissance platform to monitor student progress. In the case of the STEM director, we have benchmark assessments. She was able to coordinate those so that teachers can get assessment data in real time and know who's struggling in the class so that they can do some reteach assessments. Similarly, on the humanities side, also looking at data and being able to put that into the hands of teachers so that you can work with students who are in the critical need and also advance those who are on the other end. So those are just a couple off the top of my head.
We had gone to a model where our department heads at the high school were the people who were basically handling the, the coordination, I mean, vertical articulation, the coordination of the curriculum from, you know, K-1 right up to 12 or 12 down to K-1. Has that changed under this model? Because it sounds like, it sounds like these people are doing what we used to have our department heads doing. How does this mesh with the previous model?
So I'm not familiar with the previous model, but I will say that a lot of this work isn't just limited to what's happening during the school hours. Like, we're having them work at night or come to meetings or, so by virtue of being in that Unit B position, we can have them work to support those teachers and students along the way. They can be in classrooms during the day. They can be at meetings and facilitating in the networks that DESI runs. So, for example, we're involved in the High Quality Instructional Materials Network. We're involved in the Learning Acceleration Network. We're involved in the Sense of Belonging Network and taking all of that learning and all of those partnerships back to teachers and students. And so that is impossible to do unless you have the time allotted to you during the day, and DESI expects that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I'm going to wait for Mrs. Carpenter. Question I had, we're going to hold that motion for just a moment. That same would be line item 22025. Teaching severance. If someone could just kind of explain that one to me?
As best I can. My understanding is that, in speaking with Superintendent Vidal, these are separation costs specifically with accumulated time that teachers, when they retire, have a contractual right to get paid.
Thank you, Mr. Rippon. Did you want to add to that, Mr. Olympio?
Yes, and I spoke with Dr. Vidal about that, and he told me that the previous year was low. But again, $250,000, I would love to see the mechanics behind that. Is there, is it 210? Is it 200? I know sometimes some of these line items might be good-faith estimates, but really, I mean, there has to be a method coming up to that 250. There's got to be some rationale. There has to be, here's a list of all the retiring teachers. Here's the amounts of what needs to be paid out. There has, there has to be a number there. So I would certainly encourage further, you know, exploration of that figure. And I don't doubt that there is a number there. It's just, and if it is 250, then so be it.
Now that it's explained, the basis, the basis behind it is understandable.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll go to Mr. Hockman, then Mrs. Dunn.
Yeah, on that line.
On this item?
Yeah. I think, through you to Mr. Rippon, and Dr. Vidal wrote us, or sent us a communication, maybe he sent it to me, regarding, regarding my request for the maintenance line. And he talked about this particular teacher severance line, reducing it by $50,000. Do you know if that's part of the 106 that he, or that was come up with? No, it was not? Okay.
Tell you in one second. I can tell you another piece of information in a second, too, but let's start with the first.
Through the chair. I believe a good chunk of it was from staff development. I think it was 200 and something thousand, and the updated, I believe, was 54. Is that correct? I was just, when I was reviewing the numbers real quick.
That would be in curriculum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Carpenter's here. Can we just go back to the motion?
Yep. Okay. Let's hold that item that got a teacher severance.
Staff development's still at 54,000 in this iteration of the budget.
I believe I could be mistaken. That 54,000, I believe, was over 200 in the original.
That's budget, I think, that's tab 18. Let's see. It was 100 and, it was 100 and, it was 221. That is correct.
Right. So that's where I, when I was reviewing the numbers, I figured that's where the majority of the 106 came from, was the staff development line.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor. Any further comments? Okay. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
No.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
No.
Carrie's.
Okay, Mr. Hockman, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for identifying the teacher severance line, which was in last year's budget, $188,700. In this year's budget, it's $250,000. I moved that we level fund that to $188,700 and take maybe some risk in regard to that.
Well, that's an incorrect statement, Mr. Hockman. It's budgeted at 250.
Yeah, I think the year before, was it 188,700?
I'm sorry, the fiscal year '22 budget. It was underfunded?
Yes, Dr. Vidal said it was underfunded the prior year.
At 188,700?
Okay. So can we take any risk there, Mr. Rippon, do you believe?
I'm looking at where we are so far. Luckily, I printed the detailed budget, budget as of Tuesday, but if you indulge me a minute. That is in administration line 225. At least based on this year so far, you know, there may be some margin. There may be some margin.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Rippon. Would, Mr. Rippon, would you be, I don't want to use the word comfortable, but you're not comfortable with anything we're doing tonight, but would it be, if I asked to reduce that line by $25,000, would that, would that be a number that would not make you, that would be okay?
I think so.
Move to reduce line 22025 by $25,000 so that it would be in the budget for an amount of $225,000 rather than $250,000. So moved.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympio, did you have a comment?
I'm just trying to find additional money for you, Mr. Hockman. Reducing the Medicare insurance line? Okay, well.
Oh, I'm sorry, is it a different line?
Right, okay.
Different line.
Okay. But I'm just saying, there could be another 10 there. No?
I would say not, but I, I'll tell you why later.
Okay.
So the motion would be to reduce that line item from 250 to 225. Mr. Miko?
Sure, and I just, through the chair, I'd like to ask our business managers, is that, is that the final end game there, or do you think we could go even further on that to say 200?
No, I think that's what he just said.
Is that what he, I can't catch all that.
It's additional risk. I guess figuring out where are we, you know, toting up so far, we're at about, counting this, we're at about 300 in, you know, round numbers. 310, 335. You're about $120,000 light.
The question, if, yeah, Mr. Rippon, Mr. Miko's asking is, are we, what would your opinion be if we reduced this line from 250 to 200?
My sense is it'd probably run over. You know, I, that would be my sense. There was a reason to bring it up to 250. I think that's, you know, 25 is a 10%, you know, I think it'd be too much, but that's my opinion.
Also, Mr. Miko? Mrs. Dunn?
One of the things we always used to go to was high out, low in, but we haven't had that figure in three years. Is that anything that we could reinstitute?
It's already factored in. Every, you know, Dr. Vidal has pulled back any, any anticipated retirements has already been factored in.
Okay.
So there'd be no margin there. That's how he's been able, we've been able to balance to this point.
Okay. And are all the retirements definite at this point? I mean, if someone changed their mind, what would happen?
If they changed their mind, then we'd have a problem, but I, I guess at this point, what's been in is presumed to be permanent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Carpenter, did you have a question?
I did. Before we broke at the last meeting, we voted to increase the preschool tuition and something else. What was it?
The utility fee.
So is that part of the money that, how?
It's money. I mean, I can tell you calculating it for the preschool tuition, it's about $30,000. And for the utility fee, it's about $5,000.
Okay, still short. I'm good.
Willing for you to talk about the transportation fee, that would, what I recommend it would be more than those two combined.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Mayor, can I call the roll?
Yeah, be ready. Any further comments? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Could you read the motion again, please? Thank you.
To reduce from 250 to 225, that line item 22025.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
All right, so if I, if I see where we're going here, we're at 311,000 plus the 25. Are we, are we adding 35 for those two additional fees?
Was that part of the 106 that was presented for the?
I believe.
I think it was.
Effectively, those, I mean, I don't know per se. What I do know is those are just to keep up with the increased costs of the program, so I wouldn't recommend tapping into it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that was, I had a conversation with Dr. Vidal. Yeah.
What's that? Oh, you're talking to Delta? Yep. So right now, we're at three. We've reduced the budget 336, leaving.
I got a reduction in the budget of 337, 530.
Yep.
Leaving about one, I'm using round numbers on the 455, 117, 470. And at this moment, as we're approaching 6 o'clock on the precipice of Memorial Day weekend, I'm going to ask the mayor if he's able to cover that delta.
No, I'm not able to. Want to take a quick five-minute break?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I appreciate everybody just taking a few minutes. And, uh, just want to continue the discussion. Uh, Mr. Hoffman wrapped up his, uh, items you want to bring forward. Mr. Olympio, I, I had you next on my list. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, uh, under Tab 17, Special Education, line number 17001. It's under the IEP Chair line. I'd like to reduce that line item $107,519.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, Mr. Olympio, can you say that number one more time, please?
Yep, uh, under Special Education, line number 17001, and it's salary IEP Chairpersons.
You want to reduce that item by?
But, yep, yep, $107,519.
And seconded.
Uh, thank you. Further motion by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, I wanted to talk, uh, bring it over to Dr. Higgins.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Ben Cord. I, I only just want to point out, um, it looks like in reading this, that there is a position, a fourth position that is retiring, not being filled. And so I feel like the, the number of team chair positions that we operated with this year would remain consistent. There wasn't like an extra one floating as a, so if I looked, there's a retirement not being filled, um, in that open position. So I think the total number is the same as it would have been. I, I don't, it appears like it's an open extra position, but when I look at this closely, that retirement is not being filled, so it would be the same number of team chairs we've had this past school year, not, not an additional.
Thank you, Dr. Higgins. Dr. Chase, did you want to add?
So just to add to that, uh, the number already includes a reduction. Um, the, they took out the retirement person, so...
So has that position, though, been filled? Is that still?
I believe it's been filled for the upcoming school year, yes.
All right, I will withdraw the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if we can look at Tab 20, Transportation line. Through you to Mr. Rippon, line 220010, the homeless transportation.
Yes.
Which was, it looks like it's level funded.
Correct.
And, and do you have, uh, can you, can you provide us with where we stand on that line for this fiscal year? And if we're able to take a risk perhaps there?
Advantage of bringing paper.
And, and this was, just, I'll, I'll maybe give a little editorial while Mr. Rippon's doing that. This was a line that was funded, I think, by the state through McKinley Vento. And shame on the state for dropping the ball on this. This is a line where we're required to, students that live in our school district that somehow, um, through no fault of their own, lose their residence and, and are moved to another city or town. Um, we recognize the value and the continuity of their education and allowing them, to permit them to continue their education here in Peabody, but they may get relocated to Melrose, or Dorchester, or, um, Gloucester, and we're required to transport them from where, from wherever they're located, which is usually a shelter, um, because they've lost their home, again, due to no fault of their own. And the state used to pick up this transportation cost because it's an unexpected and unanticipated cost that every school district goes through for the benefit of the child. Um, but the state decided to, uh, stop funding this about three or four years ago. And if I recall, they did it during the Baker administration when, in the middle of a year. Uh, I think it was in January of 2020 or something like that, maybe it was 2019. Um, so I, I, I'm an equal opportunity, um, criticizer. Um, I'll, I'll criticize a Republican when he's in the governor's office and he does something wrong, or his administration does something wrong, too. So in any event, Mr. Rippon, did you have an opportunity to come across this number?
I have the nu, I have the number, the, I'm still feeling my way with the admin's accounting system. That because, the reason I say that is unlike Munis, a plug for Munis, which I'm used to, um, encumbrances and expenditures are segregated. Here, they're combined. So looking at that line, and I, I, I hope and pray, the encumbrance is overstated because it shows we're overdrawn by 650,000 on that line. And I don't believe that to be true. I believe in F-22, I, 'cause I've had to go through the end-of-year report audit here, that number clocked in at 680, 682,000. We're budgeted 782. Costs have gone up. Costs will go up again. Given that, it's probably right-sized, um, but I think, I think you're, you're heading in the right direction in this tab, in that, and again, it's, it's risk, it's late, you know, it's, I would go down two lines, or actually, I'd go down four lines. Special at out-of-district transportation, FY-24, the year we're talking about, uh, this is the last year of phase-in under Student Opportunity Act for the state under circuit breaker to pay a 75% of 100% of the cost of out-of-district transportation. Uh, that will be some additional revenue. We've sort of counted on that, again, to give us some...
So to cut, cut to the chase, Mr. Rippon, you're comfortable with me taking a risk of $117,000 in line 220014?
And make it 1, 1,750, flat, and we call it a night.
Yep, so, um, I move to reduce line 20014 to 1,800, uh, 1,750,000 even. So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, just give me a moment. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. You've heard the motion, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any comments, Mrs. Dunn?
It's a question not on that topic, but if we could stay on that page after this vote, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think that puts us on the plus side a few dollars, is that right?
That's what I was trying to calculate here. It's, it's right in that.
If we can just round up my maintenance line to whatever the difference is over the 4,000.
Well, we may as well see, Mrs. Dunn may have some ideas herself over here.
Well, we'll, we'll see about that. If not, I, I would ask that it be put in that maintenance line.
Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, this is really just a question through you to Mr. Rippon. Um, on that page, under Transportation, under the salary budget, we have for transportation overtime for athletics, $35,010. And then below, in the ordinary budget for athletics, transportation, we have $65,280, which brings me to a total of $10290. Is that what we pay for transportation for athletics?
So we have...
Would it be easier if I go with the line item?
Well, I see the line item for overtime for athletics, that's 350... Well, I see the line item for overtime for athletics, that's 35010. I'm trying to find the other, oh, down here, contractual, 65.
Yeah, 2,000, 200 in the.
Yeah, the short answer is yes. That's, you know, that's what's budgeted that we pay. That is correct, 100,000.
100,000, okay. And we pay $2,000 for ROTC. Is there transportation for the performing arts department as well? It, would that be in a separate section?
I might have to look at performing arts to see if it's separately budgeted there, which I can.
Thank you.
Through you to Mrs. Dunn. I believe.
There is, 9,000, sorry, banned transportation.
And how much is it, 9,000?
9,000.
Okay, all right. Is there any uncovered transportation costs for athletics? Do any of the groups still have to raise funding for their transportation under the booster groups?
I'm not aware of that, but.
It was a problem before you got here. It'll hit you.
All right.
Can, can I, Mr. Miko would know, if I may?
Yes, please, Mr. Miko.
Sure, through the chair to Ms. Dunn. I believe some of the, the practice games, the scrimmage games on road are not covered. So I believe one or two are, but there are situations where I know the football team or one of the other teams does have to raise funds for it.
Okay, all right. I'll bring it up at a different time under one of our budget, under one of our discussions at a regular meeting. I just wanted everyone to see that, so you can understand what I'm, what I'm looking at. To just make sure that we're, we've got some equity going on here and, and figure out what our policy is regarding transportation for the student groups and make sure that there are some that are under a real difficult situation where they're trying to raise money for the, for the, for the buses. One last question, if anyone knows. The girls' softball team plays at the Kylie School. Do they get a bus? Or do they have to get transportation? Same with swim team. Same with golf. Okay, we're going to have a longer discussion, just so you know. Thank you.
Mr. Swanson?
Golf does have, I don't know if, how it's funded, but they do get a bus from the school to away matches.
Thank you.
They do meet at the Meadows, their own transportation during home.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we'll, we'll flesh this all out at a later date. Thank you.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. If, if everyone's done with these items, I'd like to officially make motions for all of the, I'm getting a hand signal.
I just want to recap what we actually got.
Recap, and then I want to make official motions so that these things are definitely included in the budget. Okay, recap.
Well, I have four motions being made. One was the reducing 156,000 from that director of student services position, that's in the grant. Then I have 155,000 reduction for the director of technology and learning. I have reduction of the teaching severance line from 250 to 225. And then I have a reduction of, out of line 20014, out-of-district placement, a reduction of slightly over 117,000. Yeah, that's what, that's, those are the motions that have been made and voted on to date, to, to this moment. And then we held the list. I got maintenance, JROTC stipend, building attendance at the middle school. And then I have the assistant athletic director stipend, but that one I think is, well, that one's.
In the budget already, under faculty manager.
So I think that one's out. And then that choices program. Those are the items I have on the list. So, Mrs. Cop, Mrs. Carpenter?
Yeah, I just want to make some of the motions. I'll let it go around to whoever had brought them up. The first motion I'd like to make is to add two building safety attendants to the Higgins Middle School for the 2023, 2024 budget.
Second.
You've heard the motion from Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Oh, on, on the motion, Mr. Miko?
Thank you. At some point through the chair, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I'd like to get a clarification. I, I know we have the building attendance, and now we have safety attendance. I'd like a, if they're different individuals, what I would like is a job description. I know we have people, say, here at the high, at the middle school, who let people in, they greet, and so forth. That is completely different than what Ms. Carpenter is, is asking to add. She's asking to add, so we can call them something.
I, I didn't say access, because in the budget book, it says building access attendant. I didn't call it that. I called it two building safety attendants.
Safety attendants, okay.
And then I think moving forward, we can ask for a full description of their jobs and the ones that we already have and what they do and kind of shake that out as we move forward.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah, you don't intend for these to be greeter. We already have the greeter at the school. You're talking about people that are in the halls, attending to needs or whatever in terms of the building and student safety.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'm going to move forward with one other motion, and then I think some others have them. Make a motion to keep all three teachers in the choices program for the 2023, 2024 year budget.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, thank you. Can you, Mr. Mayor, tell us, was that included in the amount that we were chasing in the reduction?
No, this would be 100,000 additional.
No, it's in the, no, it's in the amount. It's in the amount you're chasing, the choices. Yes, it was.
I, I disagree. I think it was, we have, right now, we subtracted 453,000. The mo, the ones that are being added, well, unless you reduce the maintenance by 300, to 300.
No, there's 106,676 already placeholder in maintenance in this budget.
Oh, so then it would only be 300,000 you'd be asking for maintenance?
More, that 394, 324.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Rippon. Then I, then my numbers, I didn't, that wasn't factored in. I didn't know, even know that number. Yeah.
So this position is built into the reductions we've already.
That is correct.
I don't see it. So can someone please, can you explain it to me, Mr. Rippon?
Mr. Mayor?
Hey, so, so then what I guess what I'm getting at then is you've asked for 400,000. So now is the request 294,000? Because 106 is already in there?
That is, that is correct.
Right, because 106 has already been found in the budget prior to our reductions.
So now it's 294, would be, so the motion would be not to add 400, it's to add 294 because we already have 106 in.
You, no, use the 4.
106 is a funding source already resident in the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I want to create a line for 400,000. 106 has already been identified by the business manager and the superintendent. We're adding 294 to that with the vote that we're going to take tonight. So there's 106,000 missing from your calculation of the reductions that we voted on because of, it was already done by the superintendent or his administration, I should say, but we never, we haven't voted on it yet.
Okay, so there's, so there's 106 available?
I think that that's with those increase in the fees that we talked about earlier. The increase in the, the utility fee and the increase in the.
Some of it, and there's some la, some turnover savings, again, to the question, you know, it's been, as the, as, as they're noted, especially retirements, we're taking that savings and, and utilizing it.
Okay. Any other questions on Mrs. Carpenter's motion? Mrs. Dunn?
I'm sorry. This is to maintain the three teachers in the choices program?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And it says approximately 100,000. That's including someone's.
Benefits.
Benefits.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Because when I add up the salary of the three current teachers in that program, and I'm assuming the three of them would be the same ones next year, then, yeah, it's a little lower than 100,000. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
No.
Mr. Olympio?
No.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Tie?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, any other motions that we wanted to make? Mr. Hockman?
Going to make a motion to include the 700 for the Higgins Golf extracurricular activity.
It's already in the budget.
I'll make a motion to include the, you're telling me 106,676, 76 is in the budget already for maintenance?
Yes.
Then I'm going to make a motion to, boy, what have I got there, 293,000?
324.
324 into a maintenance line in the budget. So moved.
I'll second for discussion. I just want to hear where we stand with the money at the moment. Thank you. But I do think we need a budget line.
Further motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn on, for discussion. Mrs. Dunn?
No, I just wanted to see with your running total, does that match with the amount that Mr. Hockman was bringing up? Okay. Okay, there we go.
So the motion is 293,000 and. Okay.
And just for clarification, that line is going to read 400,000 once we fund it with this motion.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson?
Through you to Ms. Hockman. Could we have that worded, I think you, you mentioned in the earlier, maintenance and supplies, or maintenance and.
Yes, so.
Kind of, not just facilities maintenance, but.
Yep.
Program maintenance as well?
Well, we have, we have some money for that that I'll deal with after, but this, let me clarify the motion. It's for, it's for maintenance, equipment, supplies for the maintenance of the buildings, of the 10 school buildings. And we could, as, this line will be fleshed out further through building and ground subcommittee meetings that come up. And we'll all be able to participate in how, with an understanding, hopefully with Mr. Hafee and, and his staff and other specialists in the area to help us understand the best way to spend this money. This is just to fund the line.
Yeah, and I think this is great. Yep, so.
You might need it for contracted services.
No, I think this is great.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments before a vote? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
So I think we have one additional vote. Mrs. Dunn, did you want to make that on a?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we increase the current stipend for the Raiders competition team from 1,700 to 5,000, which would be an adjustment of 3,300. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
I would like to make a suggestion. I'd like to reconsider the director of technology and learning or STEM. We have 100,000. I would add in an additional 55 on, on our end, if that's something we want to reconsider. You know, after hearing from Dr. Chase, and, you know, I, I feel like that, we've taken some positive strides. I, I think we should maybe reconsider that one. I, I respect the will of the, of the board members, but I think that's a position that I think has become part of our team that I think is important to continue in the future, having one for humanities, having one for STEM. I don't know, I just thought, I'd like to bring that up to reconsider, and the additional 55, I think would be off. I, I would bring that forward to, on my end.
Mr. Swanson?
I'd like to make, make a motion to follow the recommendation of the mayor. And bring, to bring, bring forward discussion, reconsideration of the position of director of, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Technology and learning, STEM.
Bring forward reconsideration of the position of director of technology and STEM.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Swanson, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Any comments or thoughts on this? I know we've talked a little bit about it, but, Mr. Swanson?
Yeah, thank you. Through to committee. I voted no on this because I, I do agree with the mayor's statement is that this position in all reality has paid for itself. It's allowed Dr. Chase to focus on a lot of other work. It's expanded, and this position has brought in a lot of funds. Data points that helps the school and the district out as well. I, I think it's a valuable position. I know we don't want to be top-heavy. I know we don't want to be administrative. But we also have said in the past that the school systems have changed, the districts have changed, and the importance of positions like this really are needed in our, in this day and age. So I'd like you all to, I'd ask that you reconsider the vote as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments? Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your request is, is a reflection on how difficult some of these choices really are, and, and I appreciate that. And I respect certainly you and, and your position on this, and certainly Dr. Chase's as well, and her position, and, and Mr. Swanson as well. You know, we live, we live in, we live within a budget that's, that's finite, right? We have, we, we've kind of come and tossed and turned tonight on some things that we want to see in the budget and had to refocus some of the allocations that were presented to us. I'd still like to see, you know, for, for 100,000, I'd still like to see some upgrades in equipment at the performing arts. And I'd like to see some upgrades in equipment at the, at the athletics department, primarily at the high school. I think those are some needs that we've gone without for a long time as well. I will say this is a difficult choice. This is a difficult choice, but I just wanted to put it out there at least that if, if this motion succeeds, I think we're done for the night. If this motion fails, I'd be moving to add 50,000 to each of those departments to purchase new equipment, upgraded equipment, state-of-the-art equipment.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Just to clarify, so our next meeting will be Tuesday night. Is that the public hearing?
Yes.
I would just maybe suggest that we have another session before that public hearing to kind of give us some time to think about 100,000 and maybe discuss that right before the public hearing. Give us some time to think.
Any other comments, questions, Mrs., Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. Through to Mr. Hockman, and I fully appreciate, and I know the performing arts one as well. But to offset, and I know there is a question about grants and what we have for information. But I do know that the Rappaport Fund is coming to fruition this year, and it will have. to fruition this year, and it will have additional funds for us to offset some of the, we're trying to accomplish as well, so, I feel strongly for both, thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts? Mr. Amico?
Through the chair, um, and I, and I have been, all year, and even last year, reflecting on the great work that Dr. Chase does in getting grants, and, um, in all the hard work that she's brought in here, and, and again, back to getting the, um, our two superintendent, two assistant superintendents to make it whole, I, um, this is like, like, like Mr. Hockman said, this is a difficult decision, but, um, I'm gonna, I'll go with my gut here, and, and, and I, I believe in Dr. Chase, and I believe in what she's doing, and, um, I can go ahead and support this.
Thank you, Mr. Amico, and as Mrs. Carpenter's suggestion, that's, I'm good with that as well, I, um, you know, I know this is, we're getting near the end, we, we're kind of making some really tough calls and things, so, if we need time as a body, I'm, I'm good with that as well, um, I'm open to any of those options, yep, Dr. Chase?
Just wanted to add one more thing, um, clearly I am not an athlete, my competition is more on the academic side, um, but I would really like to see our kids as competitive in the academic arena as they are on the field, or in the arts, or any other thing where there's competition, and I also feel like our teachers are working so hard, since COVID, we have put so much on them, we expect so much of them, and we really need to exceed state average, and so I think pretty good is not good enough when we have so much talent here, and teachers who are working so hard, these positions support those teachers who are in the trenches every day with the kids, and deserve the best in professional development, the best in materials, and the best support that we can give them, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the side, Mr. Olympia?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Chase, you sold me, so I'm ready to vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olympia, any other comments, Mrs. Dunn? Okay, Mr. Amico, yep?
And, and with that said, with what Mr. Hockman said earlier, I still like to know if, if there is any money left in here that, or we find anything before Tuesday night and we have a meeting, I think we should put it towards athletics and towards performing arts, it may not be fifty thousand each, but it, every bit is going to help our athletic program and our performance arts program.
Well, I would suggest that we risk a little bit and take another forty out of, out of district placement, and put maybe twenty to each. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, before we move off of the motion that's before us, um, out of professional courtesy to Ms. Carpenter, if she's asking us to yield until Tuesday.
That's why I wanted to bring that up.
I'm prepared to vote, but if she's asking us to yield till Tuesday, I would, I would ask us to yield till Tuesday on this issue.
That's why I wanted to bring that up, because these are hard decisions, so I'm comfortable doing that, if that's?
Yeah.
How everybody feels.
Yeah, and the motion before us is actually a motion to reconsider, so it isn't a motion on the issue at the, at the moment, it was a motion to reconsider the previous vote.
Okay. All right, so we do have a motion, so there is a motion on the floor, made by Mr. Swanson, Mr. Swanson on the motion?
For clarity, for the new guy, so I appreciate the, so this motion would be for us to have the conversation, we would then put a motion in place to reinstate the position, so there would be two, two, this motion and then another to reinstate.
If, if this motion passes, we can, we could actually table the issue till Tuesday.
Okay.
That would be the proper way to do it, so if, we would be reconsidering the vote we took, and then we would table the discussion of the funding of that position till Tuesday night, and then Tuesday night, take the actual vote.
That, that's right, but.
Thank you for clarity.
Actually, in order for us to do it procedurally correct, Mr. Swanson can't make the motion to reconsider, because he voted.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so I'm gonna make the motion to reconsider, if that's okay.
You have to be on the winning side for that one, okay.
I'll make the motion to reconsider, sorry, Mr. Swanson.
I can't even second you.
So let's, uh, all right, so let's clarify, so Mr. Swanson is withdrawing the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Hockman now has brought forward the motion, uh, for, to reconsider this line item.
Right.
Seconded by Mr. Olympia. Okay?
Yeah.
And, so, unless there's no further comments, we can do a roll call on that motion?
Yes, hoping it will pass.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dudd?
Yes.
Okay, so we have our public hearing set up for?
No, 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 hold on, hold on, you, you were taking twenty, we're taking forty grand out of a line and funding twenty for athletics and twenty for performing arts.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, no.
I know, we could, we could do that Tuesday, we can take that on the, or maybe the superintendent may have some other idea for forty thousand?
Yeah, no, everyone's weak now, let's get this done. I'm sorry.
There's a, there's a fund that was mentioned at the last meeting, there, we, we would have a source of funds for Rappaport for twenty thousand dollars for next fiscal year for the performing arts.
But that's not, that has to supplement, not supplant.
Uh, so, well, I guess it would, um, you know, because it's not in the operating budget, I, I, I leave it to others at this point.
I tell you what, let's make the motion, if, if you bring us information on Tuesday that's different, we can reconsider and put it back, so I think we were talking about, um, going back to line two zero zero one zero, is that what you're thinking, Mr. Mayor?
I just felt that that could be, uh.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate.
Acceptable risk.
Okay, so we're gonna take line two zero zero one zero, reduce it by forty thousand dollars. Yeah, uh, homeless, homeless.
Line is again?
The homeless transportation.
Oh, okay.
We have not altered this line as of yet tonight.
If I could make a suggestion, I know everyone wants to split it and give twenty to athletics and twenty to performing arts, I would like to ask if you might consider forty-five thousand, with fifteen thousand to performing arts, fifteen thousand to athletics, and fifteen thousand for academics, we've got a math team, we've got.
So amended.
Academic teams, we've got the model UN, they can all use some support.
So amended, so amended.
All right, thank you, and I'll second the forty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, that's a good one, okay, um, motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dudd?
Yes, and I want to thank Dr. Chase, because something you said five minutes ago is what made me realize how many athletic teams we have and how many academic teams we have, thank you. Destination imagination's in there too.
Three thirty.
We have our public hearing scheduled, Ms. Mark O'Reilly, what time is that scheduled?
Six thirty, I'd posted a budget meeting for six, three thirty at the request of the committee.
Oh, thank you. So, I don't think we'll need?
I don't think we need to, do we need to start at the time posted, actually, I think we do. It's too late to amend, yeah, I think we actually do have to.
Three thirty? You could, you can't start sooner, you could start later.
We can start later, because I don't think we need more than an hour. I'm assuming you're buying us dinner too, Teddy, I mean, I'm Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Although, I would like to ask for consideration from Mr. Rippon and his staff, if we meet on Tuesday prior to the public hearing, um, the materials that need to be present and available to the public, there will be adjustments that could come up Tuesday night with, uh, you know, additional vote, in that case, we are already, we are able to meet beginning at three thirty, but I'm asking whether we should to allow you time to adjust, uh, the documentation and run off new copies of the budget, how, how would we best handle that for the Tuesday night open, uh, the public hearing?
I mean, there's two issues, one right now is we have a, we have an unbalanced budget, so I don't know what I'm even run, at, at this point, I don't have a balanced budget to even run, um, once we have a balanced budget, I guess I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna have to go back to central office and, and, and make sets, and I'll work with, I'll work with staff to get that done, I mean, right now, Tuesday, I'll have to wait, because again, we don't have a balanced budget, based on the votes that we have here, we're out of balance.
You have more money than you need.
You're making my point, where do I put it?
Oh, well, we'll take care of it.
We'll spend it, don't worry.
Yeah.
Right, but you're asking me to have something that.
No, I know, we'll, we'll figure out which line.
So, so let me just clarify, am I the only person who's not ready to vote on that? I think so.
But to Mr. Rippon's point, if I can, you're, you're, it doesn't matter whether it's balanced or not, you, we're voting on the, a dollar amount that we're allocating for our budget. It's just not allocated completely.
Unless I'm giving a one-page thing to the community, because that's all your, you know, if they want to see backup, it's not gonna tie.
Carpenter, yes, I think we're all, everyone else is prepared to vote on it.
So, i- if I'm the only one who's not ready to vote, and it will help Mr. Rippon prepare the paperwork for that night, I'll vote, it just might not be what I'm ready for, but if I'm the only one, it's fine, we can do that.
All right, let's, let's do the, could I, can I make another suggestion? Kind of regretting a vote I made, if we, if Mrs. Carpenter, if you're comfortable, I'd like to, um, see if we can vote tonight on that, uh, Director of Teacher and Learning and STEM, um, again, I feel we're about a hundred off right now, to the, to the plus, that would then go towards that salary, and then I would pay, I would go forward and put on the city budget that delta, okay?
I'll balance it off and just assume that's what would be appropriate.
And then I would like to ask for reconsideration on that vote regarding the Choices program, um, I, I, I think I made the, the incorrect vote, and I'd like to vote in favor of that, and I would put that on the city budget as well.
Yeah, actually, this is the appropriate time to do that.
So, um, could somebody who, would one of you allow, allow me to do that and bring that forward motion for reconsideration, and that would be funded on, on my end, not on the cit, on the school budget?
It's seventy-two thousand.
Okay. So, yeah, the seventy-two thousand and the delta on the other position would then, I would bring that forward to the, to City Council on our operating budget.
I think if you step down from the chair, you can make that motion, because you were on that side.
Would one of you do it?
I.
So we got, Mrs. Carpenter, would you be comfortable moving forward tonight?
Make a motion to reconsider the vote on the Choices staff member.
Yeah, I would like to vote yes on that, and I think I voted incorrectly, so, um, you heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, uh, seconded by Mr. Olympia, uh, so it's a motion to reconsider that vote, so we would need a second vote after, so motion for reconsideration, roll call, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dudd?
Yes.
Carries.
And then, now anybody could make the motion now, correct, the reconsideration has to be done by somebody that voted no.
Except, except for you, unless you step down.
Right. So could somebody make that motion, if, if this inclined?
Yeah, we lost. Just to that side, yeah.
On the reconsideration, it can't be somebody that voted yes, but I think on the vote, it can be anybody. Well, we.
Oh, it was okay. You can, you can, you can make the motion again to, to keep the three positions in the Choices program, you can make your motion again.
Yeah, it's your motion, Mrs. Carpenter, I, you, I, I believe you're allowed to make the motion.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we already did the reconsideration.
We voted to reconsider, and would you mind making that motion again?
I'd like to make a motion to keep all three teachers in the Choices program, second.
Okay, you heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Amico, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
No.
Mr. Olympia?
No.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dudd?
Yes.
Ty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, board members, um, all right, and then?
The STEM.
The STEM position? Anybody like to make that motion? Oh, Mrs. Carpenter, it's up to you, we can, I'm comfortable waiting.
Feel free to move forward with, uh, the motion if everybody is ready.
I know.
To be open, I'm not, to be fair, I, I know we need a lot on, on Mr. Rippon, but I'm not comfortable moving forward if your, your mind isn't made, to be honest, Mrs. Carpenter, and I, I don't want to put the pressure on you, but I want you to be comfortable with your vote. I don't want it to be a reaction.
To be perfectly honest, I don't think my vote's gonna matter. I, I think I can count the votes, I, I'm not sure, I won't say I'm sure, but if I'm, it, if it's what I think it's gonna be, then it might make Mr. Rippon's life easier if we move forward tonight, but I could be wrong.
It's not about making my life easier, let me be clear, it's about, the clock's gonna run out, and we're gonna, you know, because I can't put together in good conscience.
I understand what would happen on your end.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to reinstate the Director of Teacher and Learning STEM position for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you, you've heard the motion by Mr. Swanson, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mrs. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dudd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to recess the budget meeting till Tuesday at six thirty PM.
Great, thank you, everyone, sorry I got a little jumbled at the end, that was an error on my part, thank you.
Whoa, whoa, everybody, hold on a second, actually, we will, we will take our vote at the public hearing on the budget, okay, just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to meet before, just. Right, okay, all right, no, okay, just wanted to make sure before everyone left.